Columbus, Georgia. This is your city council. Mayor, Skip Henderson. City manager, Isaiah Hughley. Byron Hickey, District 1. Glenn Davis, District 2. Bruce Huff, District 3. Toya Tucker, District 4. Charmaine Crabbe, District 5. Gary Allen, District 6. Joanne Kogle, District 7. Walker Garrett, District 8. Travis Chambers, District 10. At-large counsel. And city attorney, Clifton Fay. Columbus, Georgia. This is your city council.
Good evening, welcome everybody. We call the March 25th meeting to order. Might want to kill the volume just a little bit if we could. Appreciate y'all being here this evening. We have an overflow crowd. So we're delighted that you all are here. But we'll remind you that even the slightest whisper can be heard and can be interfere with the business at hand. So I'll thank you in advance for showing the decorum that Columbus always shows. The first order of business is to invite Reverend Bruce Conage from Scanyers Funeral Home to the microphone. And he will provide our invocation. Welcome, sir.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
This is the day that the Lord has made.
If you would, hit that button and let me turn that light on for you.
Good evening.
There we go.
Much better. This is the day that the Lord has made, and we're going to rejoice and be glad in it. Amen. Let's pray. Here's a bow. Gracious God, we gather here today in this council chamber seeking your guidance and wisdom as we address the matters before us. Lord, may our discussions be marked by respect, understanding, and a commitment to the common good. Lord, help us to listen to one another with open hearts and minds and to make decisions that reflect your values of justice, compassion, and service. May our actions today bring honor to our city and strengthen the bonds of our community. We humbly ask for your blessings and guidance. In your name we pray and believe in this already done. Will every heart say amen?
Amen. Reverend Conage, thank you for those words. They're always appropriate. We thank you, sir. All right, if you would, please stand and join me in the pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we move on with the minutes, we want to welcome Councilor John Anker to the table. Look forward to working with you, sir. I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes unless... Motion and a second. Are there any discussions or edits regarding the minutes? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? All right, the minutes are approved. Got some young folks in the hall. We're going to usher them in now. Quite an incredible feat for Pachelli. The boys' and girls' teams have both had a pretty good couple of weeks. So we're going to recognize them. The mayor pro tem is going to offer up a proclamation. Here they come. We'll give them a few minutes to get in and come up to the front. Mr. Mayor Pro Tem?
Thank you, Mayor.
We got some more coming.
Thank you, Mayor. Pachelli is one of few high schools that can claim this honor of winning both the boys' and the girls' state championship in the same year. As I read this, I want you to know that you are recorded in the archives of the city of Columbus. This is your history, your legacy. It merits my privilege to read the proclamation, which reads as follows. Whereas on March 1st, 2025, the St. Anne Pachelli Vikings Boys and Girls Basketball Teams made history, triumphantly clinching the Georgia Independent Athletic Association Class of 4A State Championship at Columbus State University. Whereas this remarkable achievement marks back-to-back state championship victories for both teams, and whereas the St. Anne Pachelli Girls Basketball Team displayed incredible grit and determination, finishing the season with an impressive 22-4 overall record and undefeated 8-0 region record. Whereas St. Anne's Pachelli Boys Basketball Team achieved an extraordinary feat, completing a flawless 28-0 undefeated season, demonstrating dominance both within and beyond their region. Their championship victory over Athens Christian with a commanding 76-54 win showcased their talent, discipline, and preparation. And whereas the St. Anne Pachelli Girls Basketball Team, led by head coach Brian Thomas, exemplified unity and resilience despite having only 10 players, proving that heart and dedication can triumph over any challenge. And whereas the St. Anne Pachelli Boys Basketball Team faced a season of transition rebuilding after departure of three graduating seniors, three transfers, and an almost entirely new coaching staff. And whereas this historic season stands as a testament to the unwavering commitment, sacrifice, and hard work of the coaches, athletes, school administration, parents, students, and the entire Columbus community, all of whom rallied behind the Vikings in support of their journey to greatness. Whereas the St. Anne Pachelli Vikings have set an example of excellence, sportsmanship, and perseverance, bringing imminent pride to their school, their city, and the entire Columbus community. Now therefore, our mayor, Skip Henderson of Columbus, Georgia, does hereby proclaim March 1st, 2025, as St. Anne Pachelli Vikings Day.
What we'd like to do before... I know all the councils are probably going to want to congratulate you, but we'll start at this end. And if you would, just give us your name, maybe what grades you're in, and what role you played with the team, whether it coach, team, whatever. And after we get through, coaches, go ahead and get your championship speech ready because we'll ask you to say a few words, too.
My name is Jakisha Thomas. I'm the assistant coach for the girls.
I'm Brian Thomas, assistant AD and the girls' head coach.
I'm Jason Davis. I'm a sophomore, and I'm a guard for Pachelli.
I'm Rebecca Baker. I'm a sophomore, and I'm a shooting guard at Pachelli.
I'm Matthew Melvin. I'm a junior. I play shooting guard at Pachelli.
Jacob Traywick, sophomore, point guard at Pachelli.
Michaela Hoseley. I played forward for St. Anne Pachelli, and I'm a senior.
I'm Shakaya Jackson. I'm a junior, and I play guard.
I'm Jellican Drake. I'm a freshman, and I'm a guard.
I'm Zanai Crouch. I'm a junior, and I'm point guard.
I'm James Williams. I'm a freshman, shooting guard.
My name is Michael Rowe, and I'm a sophomore, and I play center.
I'm Trent Latham. I'm a senior, and I play point guard.
I am a Z. I'm a sophomore, and I play big.
I'm Makai Williams. I'm a junior, and I play small forward.
Go ahead, AJ.
My name is AJ Jackson. I'm a senior, and I play forward.
My name is Kayla Jackson. I'm a senior, and I play small forward.
My name is Jennifer Melvin, and I'm the statistician for the boys' team.
I'm Daniel Melvin. I'm an assistant coach.
I'm Calvin Thompson. I'm the head basketball coach.
And the athletic director.
Coach, why don't we start with you? If you have a few words you'd like to share with the folks? Listen, yeah, go ahead, sir.
First, I want to give all praises to God because without him, nothing this would be possible. I definitely just want to give a thank you to the whole Pachelli community. Thank you all for having us here today. And just thank you to our guys and our coaches, man. This is a testament of hard work, belief, and what faith will do. So thank you all.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
All glory to God. It's a blessing that we're able to do this back-to-back. It's just been an amazing year. Want to thank everybody that has supported us this year, the hard work that these girls have put in this year just to make history. So I'm blessed that I'm able to coach these young ladies.
Let me ask, are there any parents here with these folks? Parents, raise your hands. Y'all raised up some mighty fine children. Well, I'll tell you, let me just say that talent doesn't win championships. Character wins championships. And as adults, we look for ways to try to teach y'all. And so many times, y'all end up teaching us. The decorum and the character and the maturity that you folks have displayed here tonight and as you have displayed in your practices, as you've worked, all the sweat that nobody sees. And obviously, without a loss, you worked pretty hard on the court when you're playing games, too. But we are incredibly proud of you here in Columbus, Georgia. We thank you for the way you carry yourselves, and we thank you for those state championships that you brought back home. We've got a couple of other individuals. Councilor Huff?
Congratulations to you all. I bring greetings from my wife, my two boys. My sons are 31 and 25. They are all graduates of Pachelli. They're very proud of you all. My boys played in your position, and my younger one told me to let you know as champions what it means to work up. His senior year, they played through a no-win season. Not one win the whole season, but they came in with a good attitude, and they played through it. And they were setting the groundwork for a day like today, so everything would be in place. So know that you're sitting on top of the world now, but be able to adjust as you go and keep putting the work in. You had to put the work in to get here. Now, I have two people on the front here that skipped the microphone. I don't know who they are. She seems to be one of the big fans following you around. She didn't speak. But anyway, thank you for being... I know you're a little shy, but thank you. I did notice. And it looks like you've been to all the games, and you've been hanging out with the team and the coaches. And for Tony, Sabrina, where are you? Step up for a minute so I can say what I need to say. I'm sure the team knows, but I want everybody here to know. They took time out to call me and ask the question, how can we acknowledge the kids? They worked very hard to get the job done, and we just want to let them know how much we appreciate you. So Ms. Sabrina Latham and her husband, Tony, just want to thank you for reaching out to us. And the mayor's office took care of everything from that point on. They made it easy. Made it really easy. Thank you, thank you. But congratulations again. Congratulations again, and I'll be back soon to say hello. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Councilor Garrett?
I'm so proud of y'all. I'm a third-generation Viking. My grandmother started going... was the first person in our family that went there. And I can tell you, when I was there, we were not winning state championships. We were really happy if we had a winning season. And Pachelli just keeps coming back to council with state championships year after year. And I am so impressed with what y'all are doing. It is undeniable that Pachelli is on the move up. Keep it going. I'm proud of you. I'm proud to call myself a Viking, and once again, it's a great day to be a Viking.
Councilor Chambers?
Yes, I just want to say congratulations. My son, too. He was a Viking and played basketball, and they had a pretty decent season. But to the coaching staff, thank you for your leadership, your determination, spending time with these students. And students continue to thrive. Players continue to thrive. And it's a saying by Michael Jordan, "Some people want it to happen, some wish it would happen, others make it happen." And that's exactly what you've done. So congratulations to each and every one of you, and I am so proud of you. God bless you.
Councilor Hickey?
Just want to say congratulations, bringing you greetings from my wife, my oldest son, Nico, who went to Pachelli and graduated there. He played on their first state baseball championship, state championship team. And they send their greetings, and I just want to say congratulations. It was a lot of fun time there when they were playing ball. I recognize some of the parents and some of the faces of the coaches that are out there now. And as you know, Councilor McGarrett said, y'all just keep making us proud and keep bringing these championships. So congratulations, keep up the hard work, and make sure you stay in your books. You know, make those grades, too. Thank you very much for all that y'all have done. Thank you.
We have one sneak in. You late to practice? No. Run a lap? Let's pass the microphone down to this young man so we can get his name, too.
Oh, my name is Jalen Bush. I'm a senior, class of 2025. And yeah, I play guard. I won Player of the Year. Yeah, that's right.
Thank you. I see why you made that lone entrance. I tell you. Listen, I will tell you. Did we miss anybody that didn't get a chance at the microphone?
Yeah.
Did we? Raise your hand. Let's... We want to make sure we get you some recognition. Little bit.
Okay.
What is your name, ma'am?
I'm Kansley Thomas.
Yeah, we can.
And I'm the manager. I'm a fifth.
I'm Mari. And I'm a little player.
Listen, we're so proud of you guys. If you would, come around here, let us shake your hands, and I've got a proclamation copied for you.
Congratulations. Congratulations, man. Good to see you.
Congratulations. 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 Good job. Congratulations. 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 Right, right. Good job. Good job. You're a little late. I was a mess with you.
All right, guys. Thank y'all. We do appreciate y'all so much. We're so proud of you, and we'll see you back here this time next year.
All right. Go Vikings! Go Vikings! That's all right.
I tell you, it's always... You know, we hear so many less than positive things about young people these days. It's really refreshing to see a group of kids like that that came together and worked together and ended up with a championship to show for it. So we're delighted to recognize them. All right, Ms. City Attorney?
Got it. Thank you, Mayor. Welcome to Councilor Anker and everybody else in attendance. We've got a couple of items to vote on first. The first up is UDO text to...
Second.
Allow single-family detached homes.
All right, there's a motion and a second to approve. Is there any discussion on that item? Hearing none, please put it on the screen. And councilors, you can enter your votes.
That's passed.
All right.
Next item up is the vote for deleting the Columbus Aquatics Commission out of Article 2 in Chapter 4. As you know, we're looking at the other board to replace that item.
All right, there's a motion and a second to approve that item. Any further discussion? All right, hearing none, please put it on the screen. Councilors, once again, please register your votes. All right.
Did it go?
Got it. All right, it's approved.
That's approved. Next item, Mayor, is the demolition ordinance. These eight structures, we're going to go through with Mr. Johnson and his staff folks. If anybody in the audience, if we call you out as an owner or you recognize a property and you want to be heard, please raise your hand. We're going to start off... You can go through a quick...
Ms. Hughley?
Let me just say that Director Ryan Pruitt is not here today. I don't know if you have met Assistant Director Philip Smith, but that's who is going to be presenting today on demolitions.
Good.
Welcome.
Welcome, Philip.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council, Ms. City Attorney, Ms. City Manager. So we have eight properties on the list for demolition. The first one is 2903 Tenth Avenue.
This is Vision Investment Properties Owner. If anybody's present, speak up, please. All right.
Next on the list is 1024 Henry Avenue.
Christina Williams and Joseph Philippe Owners. Don't see any hands.
We have 2610 Jones Avenue.
So Green Prior Lewis Jr. Anybody present? Okay.
3826 Third Avenue.
BSL Investment Group. Don't see any hands, Mayor.
3822 Third Avenue.
It's BSL Investment Group again. All right.
831 Barclay Way.
Eloise Elaine Dale Owner. Anybody present? Okay.
2475 Walker Street.
William D. Holland Owner. Anyone here on that? Okay.
And last is 615 Parkchester Drive.
Gerardo, I can't even say Ledesma, Angeli's Owner. Anybody here on Parkchester Drive? All right. Mayor, that concludes the properties on the list. We'll bring this back in two weeks, as everybody knows, for a final vote.
All right, Philip, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. All right, the next item up is the housekeeping ordinance on the maternity and paternity leave policy that council adopted fairly recently, I think it was last year, to rename it to paid parental leave policy, be consistent with definitions in EEOC guidelines. Is Ms. Hollowell here? Okay. She's here, if there are any questions around the table.
Ms. City Manager?
I was just confirming that HR Director Reed Hollowell is present.
Okay.
All right. If there are no other questions, we'll bring it back in two weeks for a final vote. Thank you, Ms. Hollowell. The next item is first reading ordinance, new pay rates for Parks and Rec aquatic staff. Fiscal year 25 budget ordinance 24027 is being amended. Is Ms. Browder present? Okay.
Ms. Hughley?
Excuse me. Parks and Rec Director Holly Browder is here, and you may recall that she did an update on POOS and the disadvantage that we face with others in Columbus and in the immediate area. And I think it was... She was urged to move forward with adjusting various pay that we can do what we need to do to get lifeguards. But she's here, if you've got questions.
Doesn't appear to be any.
All right, the rates are in the chart going from $14 an hour up to $18.50. So if there are no other questions, we'll bring that back in two weeks for a vote. Thank you, Ms. Browder. We've got a couple of resolutions, Mayor, that we need separate votes on. The first one would extend the Columbus Water Works Clean Water State Revolving Fund Loan, amount of $24,705,000. That's ready for action.
All right, there's a motion and a second to approve item 6. Any further discussion? All right, please put it on the screen, please. And council, if you would, register your vote. Okay?
All right.
That's approved.
And then the last one would extend the 23 resolution on $8,869,800 Clean Water Revolving Fund Loan. Ready for a vote?
Motion, second, approve item 7. Any discussion on that resolution? Hearing none, again, please put it on the screen, and council, you can... Please add your vote. That's approved.
All right. Thank you, everybody. Those two have been approved. I didn't see Mr. Cummings or Water Works folks here, but if they're here, those are approved. The only other business items we have...
Let's try this again. Right.
Because you have such an overflow crowd, I'm gonna go ahead and dispense with the big speech, so I had to go with this and cut it down to about fifteen seconds. Um, documents you all received, it's called an anti-light notice. Um, essentially, it's demanding our property rights back, and it's telling the persons who are listed on it the reasons that they've waived their immunity and letting you know that you have been formally served. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson. I don't know if anybody else is having a hard time. I can't hear. Yeah. All right, uh, next is Ms. Monica Lucre regarding request for traffic study and implementation of speed reduction matters, and she has, I think, Lindsay, a couple of those files. If you pass those out to the counselors.
Excuse me?
Yeah, we, before I start this, let's turn that down, uh, if we can, uh, mic, uh, 'cause there's getting, it's hard for me to hear Mr. Jackson when he was speaking. Okay, Ms. Lucre, go ahead, please, ma'am.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council members. My name is Monica Lucre, and I reside at 1714 Preston Drive. First, thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak tonight and for your time and service to our community. I truly appreciate being on the agenda and to share an issue that deeply impacts the residents of Preston Drive in Midtown Georgia, excuse me, Midtown Columbus. Preston Drive has become a heavily-used, cut-through street, and the speed at which many vehicles travel has created an increasingly dangerous situation for residents, pedestrians, and even other drivers. As a concerned citizen, I have taken the first step in the official process by submitting a formal request to the Engineering Department outlining the need for safety measures on this road. However, I'm here tonight to ask for the support in ensuring that these concerns are taken seriously and are addressed in a timely manner. This issue is especially critical because Preston Drive is home to many families like mine, with young children who play in their yards, parents who walk with strollers, and other children, older children who cross the road daily. Now that the weather's warming up, we are seeing even more outdoor activity, making it even more urgent to address the speeding and traffic concerns before a preventable accident occurs. Residents should feel safe stepping outside their homes, and right now, that is simply not the case. To demonstrate the community's strong support for these safety improvements, I have personally gone door-to-door speaking with residents and neighbors, gathering signatures for a petition, advocating for, uh, traffic calming measures. Tonight, I am providing each of you with a copy of this petition, along with supportive emails from residents who were unable to meet with me in person. Additionally, I have included, included a copy of my formal letter to the Engineering Department in addition to the letter that I shared with residents outlining this, these concerns. The residents of Preston Drive and I are not just asking for speed bumps or tables, we are asking for solutions. Whether it be speed bumps, additional stop signs, or other effective traffic calming measures, we simply want our street to be safer for everyone who lives, walks, and drives there. We believe that with your support, we can make meaningful progress toward a safer community. Again, I sincerely appreciate your time and consideration. I welcome any questions and look forward to working together to improve the safety of Preston Drive. Thank you.
Uh, Counselor Huff?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you so much for being here. Um, I'll read through this later, and I'll get with the city manager and engineering and departments.
Yes, sir.
We'll go through it and set up a meeting, so we can sit and talk about it.
Beautiful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Lucre, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you so much.
All right, next is, uh, Ms. Jennifer Ledeni representing the disabled community, RE ADA compliance concerns with City Hall.
She canceled, Ms. Mayor.
She did cancel, okay. Next is Mr. Marvin Broadwater Senior regarding perception and the city charter.
My name is Marvin Broadwater Senior, and I live in the 31909 zip code, and I will request my extra three minutes now, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, City Attorney, Mr. City Manager, um, and the public. I must say, it is indeed a privilege and pleasure to appear before you tonight and to be back in the fight for veterans, the elderly, the disabled, and we're gonna talk about that later, the domestic violence victim, the youth, and those who believe they do not have a voice in this hall or chamber. Tonight, I appear as I have before with only one vote. However, there is a number I would like for you to remember, thirty-seven thousand, thirty-three people. As I entered the chambers this evening, I reflected back on the numerous conversations I had with the Honorable C.E. Red McDaniel. While Counselor McDaniel and I might have disagreed on a plethora of issues, the one thing I remember about him is that he always had time to listen. Twelve days ago, I had a council member say to me, he didn't have time to talk now, and he would call me back. I am still waiting on that call some two-hundred-and-eighty-two-thousand, I mean, two-hundred-and-eighty-two hours later. Tonight, I would like to address two issues I am very concerned about. I spoke to nine of the members on this council in depth about these concerns, as they are all interrelated. I would like to speak on perception and the charter. Thirty-seven thousand, thirty-three voters. As it pertains to perception, there were conversations that were held as far back as December 2024 about the appointment of the next counselor. In the event, iconic council member, counselor member, Judy Thomas had to resign. How do I know this? You told me this, as I spoke to the nine council of this, this, the nine members of this council for a total time of five hours and sixteen minutes. Over the last year, you have used the term transparency during a number of your council meetings. I ask you tonight, where is the transparency in this ordeal? Perception is always a person's reality. Thirty-seven thousand, thirty-three voters. Last year, I appeared before you and addressed to, and addressed this issue three times, but I can't blame this council in totality, because you have no regulatory guidance in our charter. This is why I appeared twice in April of last year and asked you to correct our antiquated charter. And on one occasion, I asked you not to leave a seat open for thirty days, as the citizens of that district would not have any representation besides the citywide councilors. And remember, the citywide seats are supposed to represent every citizen in our fair city. Everyone except the thirty-seven thousand, thirty-three, apparently. On another occasion, I asked you to change the charter for everyone rather than create a special ordinance for interim councilor. The charter is filled with so much ambiguity, especially as it pertains to the appointment of a counselor in the event a counselor resigns or passes while in office. Over thirty-seven thousand citizens voted for your last interim counselor appointee opponent. Understand, thirty-seven thousand. And you, what you, what you have done is discounted their vote, because they have no input in your appointment. Clearly, the perception here is that six of you have no regard for the will of the people, not to mention the disrespect, the disrespect this action shows for our mayor or your sitting counselor colleague. I am here tonight to ask you to start the process of changing the charter immediately for this issue. This will show that those six do indeed recognize the will of the people, of those thirty-seven thousand, thirty-three voters.
Mr. Broadwater, I'm sorry, sir.
We're good.
That's the end of five minutes.
I got you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
I'll be back at the end. Thank you, Ms. Mayor.
All right. Next is Mr. Henry Wimberly, uh, already the appointment of John Aker. Mr. Wimberly here? All right. Ms. Carolyn Cheney regarding support for City Manager Isaiah Hugley?
Yes, I'm gonna get right to your point.
Yes, ma'am. If you would just state your name and state, uh, city of residence.
Do I have to? Um, you already stated Carolyn Cheney. Okay.
Didn't say where you're from, ma'am. You from Columbus?
Sir, did you say something?
Yes, ma'am. If you would, I need you to state your name on the record in case I mess it up.
Well, I'm Carolyn Cheney, and I do wish to be called Zakiya, my nickname. Okay. Mr. Hugley's record speaks for itself. He alone is not responsible for running this city. All of you are. All of you are responsible for resolutions and solutions, et cetera. You are to fix the problem. The council is supposed to consult, deliberate, and help the community. The council seems to be displaying its love for MAGAism and those that go along to get along and doing, they're doing just that. The city council personal reference. I do not believe our city manager mismanaged any finances. I do not believe the negativity surrounding his name. Again, I am not here as a black citizen, but a human being supporting another. I do believe he has the best interest in our city, and that is what it takes, the best interest in our city and not the city council personal reference. Surely, you will run into problems, deception, inaccuracies, and you correct them. That's what the council is for, resolutions and solutions. Stop digging out old problems that has already been addressed and solved. You, the council, let a non-member become, you let a non-member come in through the side door. You have decided that you want this person to be a council member, and the rest of us must accept this because of what? He did not come through the front door, because he would have been rejected. You have now created more cracks in an already shaky foundation. You, the council, has created bickering, dissension, and conflict. And who wants a gossipy council member? And who wants a, a council member who comes in with an agenda? I do believe he is part of the design, and since I am speaking, did you entertain the people with your proposal to dismantle the church? We cannot sit back and just let you dismantle the churches. The council and First African and Friendship Churches need to come together to an agreement. The council cannot just dismantle the churches. We are the Bible Belt. The only thing we have here in Columbus is work, eat, go to sleep, and go to church. This is an emergency. Call your architect, fix the problem. When mama ain't happy, grandma ain't happy, ain't nobody happy. And in closing, and in closing, we shouldn't be talking. I'm sorry, in closing, shouldn't we be talking to the citizen concerning their survival kits when the grid eventually goes down? Shouldn't we be preparing our citizens, talking about canned goods and water and flashlights and can openers, et cetera, and going to the nearest shelter? Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
How many minutes do I have left?
Two.
All right, next is Ms. Royal Anderson representing the Muskogee County Democratic Committee. Welcome, Ms. Anderson.
Thank you. Royal Anderson, 3603 Phelps Drive.
Thank you.
Greetings, Mr. Mayor, Mr. City Manager, and members of the City Council, and the others who serve on behalf of Muskogee County's residents. My name is Royal Anderson, and I'm the newly-elected Chair of the Muskogee County Democratic Committee. I represent a group, a great group of Democrats here in our beautiful city. A couple of weeks ago, this happened. Silence. Silence and confusion, that's what happened. Thousands of your constituents were silenced and ignored, as some of you saw fit to appoint someone far removed from most of the people that live in this city. His last two camp, campaign failures are proof. The deed is done now, and the disrespect is felt. So, what do we do? Well, I'll tell you what local Democrats are gonna do. We're gonna contest every race and work hard to replace you with leaders who will make decisions that don't harm and disregard their districts. Remember that every decision made here in these chambers has an impact on families, businesses, jobs, and neighborhoods. Claiming to be nonpartisan sounds good in theory, because it calls for people to believe you are working for everyone, but we all know the truth. Just about every decision made in these chambers leans either blue or red. So, be prepared. Prepare to be challenged by Democrats who stand on democratic values and are eager to improve the everyday lives of people in Columbus, Georgia. The voters will be reminded by us Democrats that the power of democracy is in our hands, the voters. On a final note, you all have been served. You have been served notice, that the same voters you ignored would be the same voters that have a say in the 2026 upcoming elections.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. All right, and next was, uh, Ms. Teresa Elamene, but I believe she is canceled as well. All right. Mr. John Fitzpatrick Jr. regarding city government. Welcome, sir.
Good evening. How's everybody doing? Good evening. How's everybody doing?
Doing well, thanks, sir. State your name, if you, for the record.
My name is John Lewis Fitzpatrick Jr., and I'm a proud resident of Columbus, Georgia.
Thank you, sir.
In 2010, I was called to the podium in the chambers to offer a prayer. I prayed that prayer, and directly after the prayer, then Mayor Weatherston called me to his office, wanted me to understand that I didn't understand what was going on, and there were several things that I didn't know about. At this particular time, there was a person of color that was being, how should I say? He was being hunted, for, for lack of a better word. And the mayor just wanted me to understand that I didn't know what was happening. Number one, they are politicians. Politicians are those versed in the science of government and the art of governing people. Politicians are for the people and not for a people. Their politics... with leaders who will make decisions that don't harm and disregard their districts. Remember that every decision made here in these chambers has an impact on families, businesses, jobs, and neighborhoods. Claiming to be nonpartisan sounds good in theory, because it calls for people to believe you are working for everyone. But we all know the truth. Just about every decision made in these chambers leans either blue or red. So be prepared. Prepare to be challenged by Democrats who stand on democratic values and are eager to improve the everyday lives of people in Columbus, Georgia. The voters will be reminded by us Democrats that the power of democracy is in our hands, the voters. On a final note, you all have been served. You have been served notice that the same voters you ignored would be the same voters that have a say in the 2026 upcoming elections.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. All right, and next was Ms. Teresa Elamine, but I believe she is canceled as well. All right. Mr. John Fitzpatrick Jr., regarding city government. Welcome, sir.
Good evening, how's everybody doing? Good evening, how's everybody doing?
Doing well, thank you, sir. State your name for the record.
My name is John Lewis Fitzpatrick Jr., and I'm a proud resident of Columbus, Georgia.
Thank you, sir.
In 2010, I was called to the podium in the chambers to offer prayer. I prayed that prayer, and directly after the prayer, then Mayor Weatherston called me to his office, wanted me to understand that I didn't understand what was going on, and there were several things that I didn't know about. At this particular time, there was a person of color that was being, how should I say? He was being hunted, for lack of a better word. And the mayor just wanted me to understand that I didn't know what was happening. Number one, they are politicians. Politicians are those versed in the science of government and the art of governing people. Politicians are for the people and not for aid people. They are politics, dealing with people in opportunistic, manipulative, and devious ways. I can't throw rocks and hide my hands. They are politricks, the rendering of a favor for a previously rendered favor, a favor being presently rendered, or the promise of future rendering of favors for the benefit of individuals. Politricks have consequences. The word says, let us hear the conclusion of the whole matter. Fear God and keep His commandments, for this is the whole duty of man. For God shall bring every work into judgment, with every secret thing, whether it be good or whether it be evil, referencing our city manager. He served seven years as the deputy city manager under General Carvajal. He served for four years under Mayor Weatherston. He served eight years under Mayor Teresa Tomlinson. And he presently serves under our mayor, Skip Henderson, into his second term. My question is, when did he become incompetent? Because I'm sure, you can rest assured, that Mayor Weatherston would have fired him if he was not doing his job. I'm absolutely positive that Mayor Teresa Tomlinson would have cut him loose if he was not doing his job. And I believe that even our present mayor would have terminated him if, in fact, he was not doing his job. In 2019, the U.S. Census Bureau identified approximately nineteen thousand, five hundred two incorporated places, which included cities, towns, and villages. Incorporated places referred to city, towns, and villages that have their own government, which Columbus is one of. We had the twelfth and the fiftieth rankings in two, I don't know if you call them surveys or polls, whatever the case may be, but the fifty, fiftieth and the twelfth in the United States of America. Not just in Georgia, but in the country. Last week, or two weeks ago, I witnessed what's called the three-step act structure of a play. The first step was the setup. I sat in the audience, watching people talk to one another, shaking hands, moving around to specific people. And then all of a sudden, these people that I see, they come to the podium against our city manager. That led to step two, which was the confrontation. And baby, believe me, it was a confrontation. They were bold, they were disrespectful, they were loud, and they didn't care about any kind of discipline before this council. And then the third part is the resolution or catastrophe. It's the final event and a dramatic action, especially of a tragedy. I stand before you today to tell you that the two weeks ago was a catastrophe. It was an absolute catastrophe. Mr. Mayor, I feel for you. I don't know much about charter and stuff like that, but something needs to be written where you have some veto power when people get ridiculous. You need to have some power to put a stop to the ridiculous actions of some of these councilpeople, and not only the councilpeople, but the people in the audience. You need to have some veto power, sir. And I don't recall one time that Mr. City Manager and his team were ever given a standing ovation, but I have seven seconds left, and I want you all to join me in giving him a standing ovation with his team for what he has done.
All right. Next is Ms. Simi Barnes regarding city government. Ms. Barnes, welcome.
Thank you, Simi Barnes, 31906. It's a small little thing. As shocking as the decision made at the last council meeting was, I was not surprised. As I have stated before, corruption runs deep in this camp, and the actions taken at the last council meeting prove it. This orchestrated appointment showed how far you all are willing to go to hoist yourselves up at another's expense. So when I said I was shocked, it's not for the reasons one might think. See, this little story you got running here is turning out exactly, and I mean exactly like I believed it would. Except there will be a turn of events, because there's a plot twist on the horizon, an unexpected event or series of events that would take you all by surprise. Because when you play with fire, inevitably, you will get burned. See, many on this council have made a Faustian bargain, a deal with the devil. But deals of such a nature always come at a cost. See, there's a cost for unabashed ambition, revenge, and an ungodly quest for power, a power behind you that is an illusion, a mirage. Because people who lie, scheme, manipulate, and distort the truth could never be couriers of the real thing. Because true power lies in not who you are trying to tear down, but true power lies in who you are trying to lift up. True power requires a sacrifice. You gotta die to self. But true power doesn't come at a price, a price many of you are about to pay, because the price of victory will be steep. Because any victory that comes from this little stunt y'all pulled will be nothing more than a Pyrrhic victory. In other words, a grave dug for one will be a grave dug for all. Because now people see for themselves who many of you really and truly are and are now in one accord with the ideal that Columbus deserves better. So as plot twist season sits on the horizon, the costly deal that you all made with the devil will be ready and waiting to be paid fully what it's due. And I would be remiss if I didn't address you, and I hope it's okay if I address you, Mr. City Manager. I was around in 2006 when my dad was running, so I know about the history, so nobody can tell me nothing about what was going on back then, because I was there. And to watch the evolution between you and Dad's relationship, it was truly a wonderful thing to bear witness to. Dad and I had a lot of conversations, and he did not hesitate to express how he felt about how various members of council, how they addressed you. If he were here now, he would be disgusted with how you are being treated and how his seat that he held faithfully for seventeen years was used as a pawn in that mistreatment. Dad thought highly of you, and he referred to you as the best city manager in the world. I have to say that. And if he were here, he would have your back. And as the daughter of the hardest-working elected official, so do I.
All right, next is Ms. Catherine Tanner regarding changes to the code of ordinances.
My name is Kathy Tanner. I've been a resident of Columbus, Georgia, all my life. I'm here tonight to speak before the council, not as an animal advocate, but as a sincerely concerned citizen of Columbus, Georgia. My original intent was to come in and discuss changes to the city charter and any code of ordinances that pertain to the city manager's office. I believe this position needs to have a new definition written into it that makes whoever has that position have many more restrictions and much less autonomy. There should be an oversight committee that he or she will report to before spending millions of taxpayers' dollars. The city council needs to clamp down on this responsibility as well to make sure that nothing is done with no tiptoeing around. The city manager answers to you. You do not answer to the city manager. You are the ruling body and are entrusted with doing what is best for our city and your constituents. Also, anything brought before the city council from the city manager's office should be completely transparent and open to the public, including every single detail, every single name, and anyone that is going to receive any money or funds for that reason. The city council and the mayor are who the city manager ultimately must answer to. And for the last year and a half, I've sat here through meeting after meeting where questions were asked of the city manager that he either was unaware of or said he would get back to you on. Councilwoman Kogle did not stutter in any way when she was speaking at council on March 11th to the city manager, as some people said. She was tiptoeing around, asking about why the council was on their fifth round of asking about sports entertainment council and still had no answers. If I did my job like that, I would be fired for lack of performance and incompetency. Our city council is here to protect and defend the needs of the citizens of Columbus and should not be threatened and coerced by any special interest groups, such as the NAACP, that the council must vote the way they want. That is where corruption begins. A person in a position of authority should be of good character and should be competent and not have hidden agendas that they are strategically putting into place. A person should not be given a job or allowed to keep a job simply because of the color of their skin. Race has nothing to do with competency, integrity, or character. These qualities come from within a person and shine for all of us to see. Those of questionable character like to hide and not be called out or questioned, and when confronted with irrefutable facts, begin pontificating loudly to try to intimidate people into believing that what they are saying is the truth. Just because you stand in front of a microphone screaming racist comments and threatening people with their jobs does not make you a righteous man or woman or prove that you're telling the truth. The truth always comes out. It may not come out with a person screaming into a microphone. Even though some may disagree with the charter, it was followed when the council appointed Mr. Anker, and the state's law, section fifty dash fourteen dash one, was not broken either. I know a lot of people in various organizations are calling for an investigation, and I agree with that. I do believe that the government should be transparent with the citizens. I think the state attorney general, the FBI, and the GBI should all be invited down to investigate more than just the appointment of Council Anker, Councilwoman Anker, but also the financial debacle and missing funds and perhaps a trace to where the money might have disappeared to. However, it's been my personal experience that the executive branch of the city government has not been transparent. For example, the council did not know that the city manager gave his wife almost $30,000, taxpayer money. That was illegal. At least four councilors stated they were bamboozled and misled by the city manager about Golden Park as they cast their vote, not knowing that they were taking voting rights away from the citizens of the city. There were no press conferences or calls to action when Tyson Begley was placed in his council position the very night that Councilwoman House resigned and nominated him. So why is there a problem now? I believe a wrinkle has been thrown into now, into the mix now that does not align with the city manager's publicly announced plans about the future of Columbus, Georgia, the new mayor and the new city council. My family did not want me to come and speak tonight. I felt as a citizen and as part of we, the people, I could not be complacent and say nothing. My daughter said she was afraid that we would have bricks thrown through our window, and I assured her that no one was going to throw a brick through my window because I stood up and told the truth. Although what I've said to some of you in the past has been ignored, I have faith that what I'm saying tonight will not fall on deaf ears. As Aristotle so eloquently and factually put it, tolerance and apathy are the last virtues of a dying society. The willingness to tolerate that which we know to be malevolent, inept, or destructive, and the apathy to enable its persistence is that what we, the people, want for Columbus. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. All right. Next is Mr. James Ogborne, representative of leadership for the community. Welcome, sir.
Thank you. My name is James Ogborne. I live in 31906, and it is an honor to speak in front of you all. Thank you so much for hearing my comments today. I'm a little tall, so I'm going to do that. I am here to state my concerns about the appointment of John Anker to the citywide district in a six-three vote on March 11th. I thank you to Mayor Henderson for urging and slowing the process. I also would like to say thank you to Bruce Huff and Gary Allen and Travis Chambers for voting against the appointment, which I believe was rushed. My central concern is that I feel that this was handled in a very improper way. I think it was handled, the motion was way too quickly handled. We were notified as a public that there was a retirement, and then on that meeting, there was somebody placed in the seat. That is not a proper way, in my opinion, to run, to run an election. The council I recognize does have a duty to fill the seat. It is your duty to fill a seat when somebody resigns. That is the process, and I fully respect that process. However, I would point to past appointments, such as Hickey or Tyson, where there was a vetted process that took some time, took weeks of considering candidates and placing the appropriate candidate into the seat. That seems to me a process that we could have followed very easily in this situation. I don't understand the rush. And I would love to hear some explanation about why there needed to be such a rush, why it needed to happen on the same day that way. That seems to make no sense to me. When Councilwoman Thomas resigned in her letter, she stated that she wanted some due diligence in the placement of this appointment. And I don't feel that this process reflects that due diligence that we would like as citizens of this wonderful city. The, this appointment was not on the docket. The resignation was not on the docket, so the public really had no way. It took, I had signed up for this last Tuesday to talk today. So, and then the deadline was noon on Friday, for those of my colleagues who want to talk today. Why is it that we have to sign up four days in advance, and then the day of the resignation's announcement, there's a seat appointed? That makes no sense. That process does not, does not represent a democratic process, and I fully stand behind it. I don't think that's a good way to go. We do have Georgia Code of 50.14.1, which is known as the Open Meetings Act. And there has been some discussion in public venues in the Ledger Inquirer. It was discussed, Anker himself acknowledges that he was, had discussions with one or two council members. There was also some discussions, one of the other council persons, Councilor Davis, mentioned that there was discussions, because this was coming, we knew this was coming, that there was going to be a resignation on the council, and there were discussions about who the appropriate person would be. That is not open discussion. That is not following the Georgia Code. That is not following the law, in my opinion. So I do urge that we continue to investigate the situation and make sure that we follow through on the proper protocol. I just don't understand the rush, people. You know, when, when Councilor Hickey was appointed, one of the first things he said was, "Public health, public safety, transparency." And transparency is a word that gets thrown around a lot by politicians. I'd love to see some transparency in this case. I think this is a situation where we need some transparency. We need to know what was discussed. We need to know how it was discussed. And I would urge you all to take a moment and reflect and think about whether you were actually following the law. Some of you represent me directly in my district, and some of you represent me as a citywide appointment, which this is a citywide appointment. Anker himself has run for two citywide appointments in the past. In those two citywide appointments, one of them being in 2022 for the position of mayor in the center seat of this council. And in that citywide appointment, he did not win a district, and yet here he sits today on the council. So I urge you to consider this. Was that, you know, perhaps he is the right person for this seat? That is a conversation that we, as a public, needed to be involved in. That is a conversation that we needed to take some consideration over, not to make an appointment on the day. And I wonder, what is the rush? There's been another issue that's been raised a few times tonight. I wonder if this has anything to do with that. So I'll yield the rest of my time. I think I've said my piece. I just would, you know, one last thing I would like to say. You know, some of you are considering running for mayor in the next election. I know Skip Henderson, his term is going to end, and that seat is going to be vacated. Would you be enthusiastic about your runner-up in your election, filling your seat if you decided to resign your post? I'll leave you with that.
All right. Next is Mr. Harry Underwood, representing Columbus, Georgia Invisibles, regarding the opposing the appointment.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council, Mr. City Manager Hughley. My name is Harry Underwood. I represent District Six, I live in District Six and subcode 31909. And I'm glad for the opportunity to speak to the appointment process of four city councilors and to the selection of John Anker to at-large seat nine. With respect to the tight timing that is needed for the representation of at-large nine, I do not feel that a sufficiently open process was followed for applications to or considerations of vacancies on council. I also do not believe that Mr. Anker, with respect to his business bona fides, has reflected the character or vision that is needed for bridging the gaps which exist in this city. This is particularly why Mr. Anker was rejected in two elections for citywide office. I'm frustrated that this council makes decisions or commits to an actions, or at least the majority of this council makes decisions or commits to an action which kicks cannons down the road when it comes to the opportunity to move the city forward or bring the city together. I experienced this firsthand when it came to the consideration of a nondiscrimination ordinance for the city when it was brought to this council by Mr. Garrett, or the inability to create a civilian oversight board over law enforcement, which the honorable, late, and dearly beloved Pops Barnes supported and for whom I was a very good friend, especially during the COVID pandemic. Many such cases. I believe that the citywide public has not been served by this appointment or this process, and I believe those who have criticized this appointment process on legal grounds are in the right. But I also do hope for an opportunity for the public to weigh in on this matter, and I do hope that when we do get a council that is more reflective of the needs of the city, that we can have those discussions about a nondiscrimination ordinance or a civilian oversight board over law enforcement. or a civilian oversight board over law enforcement, and many other such things that can move the city forward and bring us together. And I thank you for your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Underwood. Next, Mr. Marquis Avery regarding appointments. Welcome, sir.
Thank you so much, Marquis Avery, a proud resident of District 7. I want to say to the mayor, council members, fellow citizens, my name is Marquis Avery, and I stand before you not just as a resident of Columbus, but as someone who believes in justice, fairness, and the importance of ethical leadership. Tonight, I am here to address the potentially illegal appointment of John Anchor and his credible threat to fire Isaiah Hughley, the first African-American city manager in this city's history. Ephesians 6 and 12 tells us that we wrestle not against flesh and blood, but against principalities, against powers, against the rulers of the darkness of this world, against spiritual wickedness in high places. Mr. Anchor, I'm sure you're a nice man.
Mr. Avery.
But simply being nice doesn't qualify.
Marquis, address your comments to me.
Okay, simply does not qualify one for an appointment to this esteemed council. You couldn't get through the front door, so you chose to come in through the back. Three times the citizens of this community have told you that they didn't want your leadership. I don't know about you, but me personally, I don't like being in places that I'm not wanted. My gut tells me that if Councilor Chambers would have lost his race in 2024, that he would have never been given a council seat a year later as a consolation prize. What bothers me most isn't the political scheme and lack of transparency surrounding your nomination, but rather in your first press conference, after being questionably confirmed, you told WRBL that you would make the motion to get rid of Isaiah Hughley in a moment that could have been used to unite us as a community. You showed your true colors and provided a sterling example of why you don't deserve to serve in this position and why we never voted for you in the past. But let me be clear about a few things. Isaiah Hughley is not just another city employee. He is a man who has dedicated decades of service to making Columbus a better place for us all. Under his leadership, this city has seen economic growth, infrastructure improvements, and progress that has benefited residents across all communities. Now, you may not agree with every decision he has made, but leadership is about progress. We cannot allow personal politics and backdoor deals to outweigh a record of public service. If this council is truly committed to good governance, then fairness must be the foundation of our decision-making. Mr. Mayor, there must be an investigation to see if there was a violation of the Open Meeting Act. It's hard for me to believe that council received a resignation in one minute, and then the next minute, we looked at it and we said, oh, there goes somebody. He will do it. The people of Columbus are watching, and if this council moves forth with this unjust decision, the voters will remember who stood for fairness and who participated in this political takedown. Isaiah Hughley, we stand with you because you stood with us. You stood with Columbus, and this isn't a fight that you have to endure alone. And to all those who voted to support Mr. Anchor's nomination, who are up for reelection next year, clear your schedule. We gonna be booked and busy because neither of you will run unopposed. Until justice rolls down like water and righteousness like a mighty stream. And with that, I will yield the balance of my time.
Thank you, sir. All right, next, and again, I remind you, try to hold the applause down, please. Mr. Melvin Tanner, representing the NAACP. Mr. Tanner, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You can begin, sir.
No, just give them to the mayor, please. Excuse me, ma'am. To the mayor, thank you. Before we begin, words you probably get tired of hearing today is transparency. And in order to be transparent to the people that don't know, we just handed Mr. Mayor, the IMA and the NAACP. You about to say something, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right. We are, had a petition sent around the city, and there's more to come, Mr. Mayor. For those of you not aware of the petition, basically it states that we, the undersigned, support your petition for transparency and accountability. By signing this petition, we express our commitment to the cause and request that Mayor Skip Henderson call upon the Attorney General to launch an immediate investigation into this matter. And with that being said, before I begin, on behalf of NAACP and myself, Ms. Judy Thomas, if you're watching, our prayers are with you. And I'm sure everyone can notice that there's two seats that are missing tonight. More than likely, it should probably be three. With that being said, good evening, Mayor, City Manager, City Attorney, and elected council members. I am Melvin Tanner Jr., president of the NAACP, Columbus, Georgia. And before I continue, I want to say this. On behalf of Ms. Tanner that spoke, that's not my wife, no relation, by the way, NAACP is not a social organization, okay? It's a civil rights organization. Effective governance demands clarity, respect, and adherence to the distinct roles of elected and appointed officials. Elected officials must uphold their duty to understand and meet the expectation of the citizens they represent. It is imperative that the members of the city council demonstrate the ability to work together effectively. Yet from the outside perception, such collaboration appears to be absent. Trust and confidence in leadership can only strive when common goals are established and pursued collectively. We require direct answers for the following, Mr. Mayor. One, has the Attorney General commenced his investigation? Two, will the findings of this investigation be disclosed to the public? And three, should the evidence reveal unlawful council actions? What steps will you take to address those violations? Citizens throughout the city are growing increasingly active in discussions about the political dynamics of their district, driven by a mountain like of trust in their elected officials. The frequency in the town's meetings or town hall meetings on this matter is evidence of this growing concern. Let us not overlook that the strength of Columbus lies in trust, transparency, and cooperation. This council must prioritize the common good of our city above all else. Effective government is a partnership that hinges on integrity and mutual respect between elected officials, appointed staff, and the citizens they serve. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tanner. All right. Next is Ms. Pamela Moss, and I think she, she canceled. All right. And next is Dr. Natalie Nicole, representing Role Model Academy of Arts, accountability and equitable decision-making from staff in the mayor's office.
Welcome, ma'am. Good evening, sir. Thank you. Dr. Natalie Nicole, representing Role Model Academy, zip code 31901. Few things about transparency. I've emailed my council representatives as it regards this appointment and my intent for an investigation to move forth with no response on two occasions. On the second email, I asked that there be a confirmation that you at least acknowledged or received my email. No response. And I don't like to have to come on a public agenda to talk to people that I have an email for. And all it takes is a simple email response to acknowledge an email. People like to say, "We thank you for your service." As a veteran, this is very disrespectful. It's very disrespectful. Serve this nation. People have the luxury and the audacity to be dismissive and not respond to emails or concerns. Now, in addition to that, I submitted proclamations March 4th. I did not hear back from anybody until March 18th. That was after I spoke to a counselor, and he reached out to the office. With that regard, I received an email on March 18th that stated, "Due to the influx of proclamations, we're gonna reinforce or make sure we enforce the rules." So that raises concern for me because the rules should be followed across the board every time for every citizen. And it should be fair, and it should be transparent across the board. The ladies that I recommended for these proclamations within this month, Women's History Month, some veterans, some natives of this area have contributed countless, countless amounts of community service to our youth. Unfortunately, our company is called Role Model Academy, and I do my best to speak up when I see that as adults, we are not being role models. And it's unfortunate that I wouldn't want my children to watch these council meetings based on the disrespect that sits among, on these meetings. Poor emotional intelligence, lack of respect for one another, lack of respect for the mayor. Leadership, no matter who's in that position, deserves respect. And one day, when you're in that position, you will want the same respect. So I suggest that as leaders, as our leaders, and you're supposed to be representing us, that you model what's appropriate. You model what's appropriate to consist, to your citizens, and you respond to emails in a timely manner. And we wouldn't have the problems that we're having with so many people being concerned about consistency and transparency. I would like a response as it regards to proclamations that I submitted. I ask, where did I miss the mark? My daughter graduated from Carver High School. I submitted several proclamations before when they were champs, two or three years, no issues. But for these ladies, I got a dismissive email and an oh, well, with no, no specifics on how I could fix it. And it's very much disrespectful, and I don't appreciate it.
Thank you, ma'am.
And Dr. Nicole, we will, I'll check into that because that came from my office. I'm only too happy to take responsibility for it. All right. Next is Dr. Donald Muller, representing veterans with PTSD. Welcome, sir.
Thank you, and this to the council and to our good people here in the congregation. I'm Dr. Don Muller. I do research in neuroscience. I'm an oral and maxillofacial surgeon, and I'm also a physician. The intent of this briefing is to acquaint you with the right of our veterans in the epidemic of PTSD-associated stomatonic injuries. That's, don't think just to, I'm talking about the whole jaw apparatus. That's what I specialize in, and that's what I do research in. I publish papers. The VA has, without any scientific basis or medical justification or clinical evidence, arbitrarily excluded stomatonic injuries as part of their veterans' anatomy. This is outrageous. The stomatonic system involves the bones, joints, jaw-supporting musculature, nerves, muscles, swallowing, and finally, the teeth. Dentistry is not king of this turf. Many of my friends are dentists. In this, into being a physician, I am a dentist. However, they have it backwards. They are giving these veterans no scientific respect. They're, the perception, I love the words I'm hearing tonight. No perception of how the system works. The VA dental system, for obvious and political reasons, completely ignored modern scientific research and has mandated 19th-century myopic parochial-based view of stomatonic injuries. So I'm basically, I'm telling them, you're going back to 19th-century dentistry, okay? This pseudo-scientific position has as a final result the exclusion of 2 million veterans. These people are going home and suffering at night. They can't go to sleep. Their jaws hurt. The VA has tried to skirt this issue by reclassifying it. I have written congressmen numerous times. I've written chiefs of staff. This is getting to be disrespectful. And I, and I have to honestly say, here are the figures. The VA system has plenty of researchers. Say, over 3,300 researchers. Want to guess how many have been a dentist? Zero. You know how long that's been going on? Five to six decades. There are 15,000 published, peer-reviewed literature sources on stomat, I mean, on anything but stomatonic injuries. For example, there's a fellowship called the Quality Improvement Scholars Program, which has been in existence for over 30 years and produced over 400 graduates. Guess what? There's never been a dentist. They invite physicians, pharmacists, physical therapists, et cetera. Never a dentist. How can the director of the Research and Development, who was, they left, epidemiologist, miss 2 million suffering veterans? 30% of our veterans get PTSD now from multiple deployments. This is an outrage. Another example is the Office of Academic Affiliates. They have fellowships. Well, we can't do it. We don't have any dental mentors. You certainly did hire 3,300 scientists. The VA states specifically that oral health is part of the whole health. They have it in signs on their website. What a bait and switch we got there. They also refuse to operationally define dentistry. I demand it. As a dentist and oral surgeon, you define operational. What is dentistry? Where's the boundary between your teeth, your jaws, and the human body? They have never had a physician doing that. Not only that, who examines our veterans when they're coming with a stomatic-natic injury? VA dentists who are not qualified to do it. The American Dental Association has board-certified oral facial pain specialists, oral medicine specialists, and oral and maxillofacial surgeons who the VA refuses to use. Furthermore, all these board-certified people have been excluded from the examination. You're probably wondering why I'm talking to the, to this body and these people. Well, it's very simple. Mr. Benjamin Kraus, who is an attorney who had a traumatic brain injury, decided that the people who were examining the thousands of veterans that are supposed to be getting adequate exams for disability were never seen by neurosurgeons, neurologists, or neurorehabilitator specialists. He told the VA, "You're going to get these people." This is not an issue of congressional funding. This is not Democrats, Republicans. This is substandard care of our veterans. It borders on malpractice. Another critical issue is the VA's refusal to define where medicine stops, dentistry and oral health start. Go to their website. They promise our veterans that they're going to get oral health care, but then they redefine it, "You're not eligible for dental care." Now, what am I talking about? If a veteran gets 100% disability, they will get dental care. But if you're injured and have PTSD and have stomatonic problems, you get nothing. That's outrageous. Now, I don't need a lesson from-
Dr. Muller? Yes. I'm so sorry, sir, but the five minutes are up. But thank you.
You'll have a two-thank center later. Just kidding.
All right, thank you. Thank you for what you did. Dr. Muller, we really do appreciate your service to, especially to veterans. All right. Next is Mr. Wayne Hales, representing the Courier-Eco-Latino newspaper.
Good evening.
All right. You know, as I stand here, and I thought about today. And it's interesting. 20 years ago today, I started the Courier-Eco-Latino newspaper. And we did so because we knew that there was no one really talking about the issue that our community cared about. So it's apropos that I'm here today to talk about this. So it's apropos that I'm here today to talk about this. Mayor Henderson, I want to acknowledge your decision to investigate whether Columbus councilors violated the state law by privately discussing the selection of former councillor Judy Thomas's replacement. But let me be clear, this is not just about an internal inquiry. This is about defending the integrity of our local government and upholding the people's right to transparency. Georgia's Open Meetings Act is not a suggestion, it is the law. If a form of council is privately met, whether in person, by text, or by email, to discuss city business, they did not just betray the law, they betrayed the public trust. And that, Mayor Henderson, is unacceptable. Some may try to claim ignorance, but the facts speak for themselves. Councilors have publicly admitted to discussing this matter among themselves and with Mr. Anchor prior to the city council meeting. That alone contradicts Mr. Anchor's claim that he was surprised by his nomination. Furthermore, a Facebook post from March 12th reveals that these discussions have been happening since at least December of last year. This is not speculation, this is evidence. So we ask, who is lying? Who is hiding the truth? This is more than a breach of protocol, it is an attack on the principles of democracy. When elected officials conspire behind closed doors, they are not working for the people, they are working against them. And when they break the law to serve their own interests, they are no longer fit to serve at all. Mayor Henderson, your investigation must be thorough, independent, and uncompromising. No excuses, no cover-ups, no carefully worded statements designed to placate the public. The people of Columbus will not be fooled, nor will we be silent. Let this serve, as I take my seat, let this serve as a warning to those who believe that they can govern in secrecy. We are watching, we are paying attention, and we will hold you accountable. Regardless of the outcome of this investigation, we are prepared to take action where it matters most, at the ballot box. The next election will be reckoning of those who have shown they no longer serve the interests of the people. We demand answers, we demand accountability, and we will accept nothing else.
Thank you, Mr. Hales. All right. Next is Mr. Edward DeBose to discuss the appointment.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Edward Oscar DeBose, 31907 zip code. I live in District 4, where we hope to change it out in 2028. Mr. Mayor, first of all, I want to thank you for considering calling for an investigation because this city council is not the city council of Mayor Bobby Peters, is not the city council of Mayor Jim Warrington, and it sure ain't the city council of Mayor Theresa Thompson. But Mr. Mayor, the boss and the buck stops for a few. It's bad for me to have to move off my national post as chairman of the National Armed Services and Veteran Affairs Committee, where we dealing with serious issues with veterans, to come here in the city to address this council. When I walked in downstairs and even upstairs, with all respect to my good friend, Greg Contra, it felt like coming to a meeting of Bull Connors and George Wallace. We were overprotected and we appreciate you for the safety. The organization, Mr. Mayor, and to all of those who are watching, we're not a special interest group. We are a civil rights organization recognized since 1909 present. We work for Black, White, Democrat, and Republican, all people who believe in freedom. Mr. Mayor and City Council, the power always belongs to the people. So I want to put it like this. I did some research to see how many times Mr. Anchor has been on the public agenda. Back me up if I have it wrong, I'm showing that he has not appeared on the public agenda in over three years, along with John Schenkel. If I'm wrong, we have the paper here, they can publish it. This solidifies our case that this was an orchestrated and manipulated, since it has not been on the public agenda for over three years, this event. It shows how little he was involved in the community. I ask you to respond to that. This is a setup to try to take out one man. This is a setup, and we are watching in the city and in the state. In addition, there's also stipulation in OCGA 50-14-1, the Open Meetings Act, that the city council is supposed to notify the public two weeks in advance of anything of importance so that the public has the right and the privilege to address those issues on the public agenda. Instead, like a thief in the night, we are notified the night of Judy Thomas's retirement. And let me pause and offer a sincere prayer for City Council Judy Thomas. May God heal her. This is not about her. When she has been absent physically from city council meetings since October 2024, then all, then of all things, John Anchor so happened to be on public agenda that night when he is never there, call Click of Council, you can. And I found it out, this was not by happenstance. This was an orchestrated and manipulated, especially when councillor who I had some conversation with, Byron Hickey, was John Anchor's campaign manager for his mayor race. The Columbus-led inquiries, our legal arm, and at the very minimum, Judy's resignation and John Anchor's appointment was not in the legal section notifying the public on Sunday, March 9th, for the city council meeting on March 11th, as prescribed by law. Picture this, as time is running out, John Anchor is put in place that night. If it was nothing to hide, the judges, Mayor, by your own words, didn't even know, most of the people didn't know, go find two judges to swear him in. If it was not in darkness, why could we not all watch it? We might have wanted to see him sworn in. Here's the issue to every city council member. You have a fiduciary responsibility, a fiduciary responsibility to do what's right and not what's in the best interest. I'm only one vote, but one vote has changed a lot of things on a national level, at the state level, and at the city level. I close by looking directly at you, Mr. Mayor. This is not you. This is not the mayor that was a city council member under Mayor Bobby Peterson, under Mayor Warrington, or Mayor Theresa Thompson. This is not you. I ask you to use that power. You may not, it may not happen, but do what's right and call for that investigation. Take your hands out of it. I ask John Anchor, please step down from your seat honorably. Step down and do it the right way.
Mr. DeBose, that's five minutes.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right. And next is Ms. Monica Watley, making time for democracy.
Hello. I'm Monica Watley. I'm in 31904, proud member of District 7. I want to make a comment about the recent appointment of John Anchor following the resignation of Judy Thomas. I do share a lot of the concerns that have already been shared, so I won't repeat what's been said. I certainly can't say it as well as some of them can. I'm just a regular voter, regular citizen. I don't generally come to city council meetings. I may watch it at home, but I'm not one of the usual voices and faces that you might see here. And really, I signed up for public comment for the first time tonight, just to really stand in for so many people who are watching tonight, people who are downstairs in the overflow room, and my fellow neighbors and community members here. We, the people, are paying attention. We do want to be a part of the process. I was disappointed when I discovered that this pretty monumental decision, one that under regular circumstances would require an election by the people, was done at the last meeting without any real input from the people. Now, I understand that what was done may have technically been allowed. I understand that work needs to get done, and I can appreciate that. I'm all for government efficiency. I know that's a hot topic these days. However, there is always time for democracy. There is always time to listen to your constituents. Just because there may be a way to bypass an election in this hopefully infrequent circumstance, that does not give us permission to bypass democracy. Now, I really can't comment on what we should do to change the outcome or go back in time. I don't have a specific ask. I would humbly defer to some of the other speakers who have great ideas and others who may want to come forward with ideas. I would co-sign an investigation, for sure. I just want us to keep in mind that we really need to move at the speed of trust. There's a saying, I'm sure many people know, I believe it's an African proverb, if you want to go fast, go alone. If you want to go far, go together. So even if everything was done in accordance with the charter, even if there were no backroom conversations and the stars were just perfectly aligned at the last meeting, even if you had the purest intentions of simply making sure our government runs efficiently, I would ask that please, moving forward, include your constituents, move at the speed of trust, and I believe Columbus will go far. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Watley. Next, Dr. Melvin Steed, representing the Melting Pot Grace Apostolic Center regarding proposed land used by a nonprofit organization. And I, yeah.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members, city manager. It is my honor to be here this evening. I am not here to talk about the things that are going on in the city, but I would be remiss to not say that the Grace Apostolic Center has this city council, this city manager, and our mayor, and all members of the council, in our prayers. And we will continue to keep you in our prayers. Now, to the agenda that we're here for. Grace Apostolic Center, the fight, the thing that you got handed out, there's a PowerPoint presentation of what we're doing, but I'm addressing the handout with the two pages titled "The Melting Pot Empowering Communities." I want to talk to you about our vision just a little bit, our mission and vision at the GAC and the Melting Pot, that we're a 501(c)(3) organization dedicated to providing essential community services to undeserved and underprivileged communities within the urban areas. Our mission is to foster supportive environment where individuals can access the resources they need to thrive. And through a diverse array of programs, initiatives, and aim to address the multiplacid challenges faced in our communities to empower them to achieve their full potential. We want to do that through community services. First, by providing a farmer's market and a community garden. That farmer's market is to provide fresh produce and vegetables to the community and as well provide an avenue for young, upcoming, future farmers to learn how to do it. And we want to do it on that land right by 10th Avenue and 4th Street. Then to provide educational training to break the cycle of poverty. And I'm just, I'm just hitting these lightly because I know I'm on a time limit. Then we can provide job training skills. Those skills are just to get people trained, get them equipped to go into the market, young people especially, and then job skills, interviews, as well as education as far as GED training and things of that nature. But our main goal is to put back into the community from where we live. We also want to provide life training skills. And one thing that we're really excited about with what we want to do is, one, introduce to the city a pre-trial diversion program. We have a template that's already in place and we want to bring that here to the city by way of the Melting Pot. It's committed to providing supportive alternative incarceration for individuals involved in criminal justice systems. A pre-trial diversion program aims to reduce recidivism and promote rehabilitation by offering individuals opportunity to participate in community service, educational programs, counseling, instead of serving time in jail. We want to clear up the jails and not fill them up. And we believe if we can set this up here on this land, we can provide that. We also providing an opportunity for volunteers so people can come and help us. Some members of our team are here with me today, and through those members of the team, we're partnering with various different organizations that will come in and help provide these things that we're doing. But the bottom line is, together, we can make a difference. And we believe we can make a difference right here in the city where we live. I've lived in this area for 45-plus years. I've grown to love it. I wasn't born here, but I don't tell people I'm from North Carolina anymore. I tell them I'm from Columbus, Georgia. Thank you for your time, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Hales. Thank you, sir. All right. Next is Reverend Johnny Flakes III regarding process for city council appointment.
Welcome, sir. Thank you so very much, Mr. Mayor, to the Mayor Pro Tem and to the city manager and to the remaining of those who are seated as city council members. Mr. Mayor, I've been hearing people say, we want our voice heard. We encourage you to call for an investigation. So I want you to see, as well as other council members, to see who the we are. So I'm going to ask those who are here to show the we, who have come out to let this city council know that we do not accept the way the process of appointing a replacement for Councilwoman Judy Thomas. I'm going to ask the we to stand at this moment. We are here and we are not going away. I want you, city council persons, to know that we are here because we do not agree with the way this city manager has been treated. We are here to let you know that there will be reckoning at the poll. Understand that. It's interesting that when, and Mr. Mayor and others and you who are in the overflow, because this is not just all of us, but there are those in the overflow that's a part of the we. There are pastors here, which I represent, and I'm humbled to be given the opportunity to represent the IMA, the Inter-Dominational Ministry of Alliance. We have been galvanized. We will not be divided. We are here to say to this city council, enough is enough. We will not continue to sit silent when investigations are called in to try and impugn the image, the integrity of this city manager. We will not sit by when investigations are ordered to come in and try and criminalize women who happen to be in the division that he leads. We are not blind. We, our eyes are wide open. When we come, it's interesting, and I love animals, Mr. Mayor, I really do. I have nothing against animals, but when there were those who came 18 or more on the agenda, we didn't see overpolicing, over law enforcement, nothing against that, God bless you, but it reminds us of the history of Jim Crowism. When doing Jim Crowism, the reason that there was a Jim Crow law to really discourage and to say to Black free slaves not to gather was because of the fear of insurrection. We are peaceful people. So when Black folks and other people of color gather, you don't have to be afraid that we're going to do something that's going to be out of order. What needs to be looked at is whether this council is being transparent and in order. Because when we are asking that an investigation be called, we're saying it is obvious that when there are certain people on the council didn't even know that the resignation was going to be read, when council persons didn't know that- When councilpersons didn't know that, um, a motion was going to be made and a second was going to be made, and then it was going to be carried to replace the councilperson who said in her letter, "Do the due diligence." That's what the former councilwoman Judy Thomas advised this council to do. It's kind of sad when there are those who will come out and make public statements that we want to honor city councilwoman Judy Thomas by expediently replacing her position.
Pastor, I apologize. That's five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Please do what's right, city council, do what's right.
Thank you, sir. All right, next is Mr. Demetrius McBride, uh, representing the Urban League of the River Valley Young Professionals. Welcome, sir.
Good evening. Demetrius McBride, 31820. Honorable Mr. Peniston, city manager, council members, and citizens. I stand before you today to call for an immediate review and amendment of the Columbus, Georgia City Charter, as many others have, regarding the process of appointing council members to fill vacated seats. Our city's leadership should reflect transparency, a word thrown around a lot this evening. It should also show fairness and respect of us, the people. However, the current process as outlined in Section 6-201 of our charter raises concerns that demand our urgent attention. Under the existing charter, if a vacancy occurs within a year and a half of regular election, a special election must be called within 10 days to allow voters to decide their new representative. However, if the vacancy occurs after a year and a half, and it's already been established that discussion was had prior to this vacancy, the city council then is allowed to appoint the replacement, and the individual serves until its successor is elected at the next regular election. This process, albeit while somewhat functional, raises a critical issue. It allows unelected individuals to represent the people for an extended period, potentially up to two years, without voter input. This undermines the very foundation of our democracy, representation for the people by the people. Recent and past appointments have highlighted the need for reform, ensuring that every citizen's voice is heard in selecting those who make decisions on our behalf. Although the charter does not specify mandatory review schedule, I was informed by my councilman, council, District 6, that in practice charter changes are only formally addressed every 10 years with the next review scheduled for 2030. The Charter Review Commission, a 25-member body composed of 15 appointees from the mayor and from one, and one person from each council district, conducts a 12- to 18-month review, holding public meetings and presenting findings for voter approval. However, I stand before you to say we cannot wait another five years. We need to fix this issue today. The charter already provides a clear and immediate path to amendment under Section 8 400, 8401 and 8402. The charter may be changed through, one, an act of the General Assembly of Georgia, two, a council-initiated ordinance requiring at least six affirmative votes and ratification through a referendum by Columbus voters, and I know we have six people eager to vote. Three, a citizens-led petition requiring signatures from at least 10% of qualified electors, followed by a referendum vote. Furthermore, while there is a unwritten rule as expressed to be established in 1970s or 1980s that appointees agree not to run for the seat in the next election, this is nowhere codified in the charter. This precedent was set to ensure voters, not council members, decide their representatives. However, without legal enforcement, this rule remains a gentleman's agreement rather than a guarantee. And I, I'm not sure how gentlemanly we've been these last few weeks. I urge the council to act now. We must propose an amendment ensuring all council vacancies are filled by special election, regardless of when they occur within a term. We must also formalize the existing unwritten rule to prevent any ambiguity, another word used often tonight, in the future. Counsel, you have the power. You know the process, you understand the charter. And tonight you can set precedent. Make the change today. Let's not wait until 2030. The people of Columbus deserve action now. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, next, Ms. Laura Irvin regarding transparency in city representations. Welcome, ma'am.
Hi. Uh, my name is Laura Irvin. I'm 31906, District 8. And I want to tell you guys first of all that I truly believe that trust in this council is important. And given the recent decision to appoint Anchor, I want y'all to know that I felt like I had to come here for the first time to let you know directly that I have serious concerns about the judgment of all but three of you and Mayor Henderson. I am assuming right now that the letter of the law was followed, but I will tell you that the technical following of a rule and the spirit of transparency and accountability that is the mandate of this council are two very different things. And there are a bunch of people here tonight that understand that. The fact that members of our community were caught off guard by not only the resignation, but also the motion for appointment is unacceptable. Important decisions, especially those with so much impact on the public, they should never be a surprise. There's not an excuse. There's no reason why this was not on the public agenda. So whether it was intentional or not, I don't know. And this has been said before, but the impression was backhanded, backdoor deals, side talks. The trust is damaged, the confidence is shaken. And beyond the process, I, I have so many questions about the judgment. Politics right now, to put it mildly maybe, are in a period of deep unrest. And appointing somebody as divisive as Anchor moves us way back. This council should be moving towards stability. It should be earning trust. And the citizens of Columbus have spoken, I think my math might be wrong, so I won't say, on several separate occasions. When you consider general elections and runoffs, the citizens of Columbus have made their voice very clear. We don't trust your judgment. We don't want your leadership. We don't like your ideas. You don't have a place in an elected position. This appointment sends a message that public outcry, voter wishes, and past concerns can and will be ignored by this council. It also tells me that a good many of you do not prioritize thoughtful leadership. Columbus deserves a council that is transparent, the word of the night. Columbus deserves a city council that can demonstrate sound judgment. And Columbus deserves a city council that wants to unite rather than divide. Um, I did have a direct ask, that was all I really wanted to say, but I don't know if I'm allowed to ask. I wanted to know if y'all could answer individually the question. Did you know that a motion for this appointment was going to be made at the last city council meeting? I don't know if that's allowed, but I'm done.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, next is Dr. John Van Dorn regarding defense of public servants and reconsideration of council appointment. Welcome, sir.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, councilors, sincerely for listening to our public comments. Uh, I am Dr. John Van Dorn. I am a native of Columbus, Georgia, a proud graduate of its public school system. I do know the city top to bottom, east to west, and I'm, I think, pretty deeply knowledgeable about public affairs and administration. I've seen and studied government systems all over the world and how they tend to fail, how they tend to spiral down. And I have to say, you know, the council here, as you can probably tell, has gotten itself in a little bit of a pickle. But you can restore the public trust upon which everything depends by taking three specific steps. But before I talk about those three specific steps, how did we get here? Well, it's pretty clear. Um, Mr. Mayor, they ignored your very sage and timely counsel to take your time, do due diligence, listen to the public, and entertain multiple candidates. They appear, the majority, to reward behavior that's part of a national problem, and that is running down public servants and public service in order to obtain elected office. That's a deeply troubling thing, and I don't believe that's Columbus, Georgia. Also, operating on the false assumption that nobody's qualified or interested in council or public service. I found some interesting quotes in the paper that, you know, there was just nobody around, nobody who understands budgeting, nobody who really is interested in, you know, finds it such a chore and a bore to sit on city council. You know, and if that's really the attitude of the appointee, why sit here? Why be on something that you find a chore and a bore? It just boggles my mind. You know, if I had known, probably if many people had known that this was a vacancy, I would have liked to have been considered. I believe I'm very well qualified and have an optimal skill set that could have served the public well. But it's not about me, it's about a whole bunch of people that didn't get the opportunity to stand for public service and for due diligence consideration. So there's really three things that can be done to restore the public trust. I hope you'll seriously consider them. First, rescind this ill-considered and hasty appointment, right? It would only take two or maybe three members plus the mayor, a simple majority, to undo and to then open it up to the due diligence and the consideration of multiple candidates, which should and could have been done in the first place. And then and only then should you revote on the, uh, permanent appointment. Number two has been said many times, amend the city charter to include these common sense due diligence methods and measures. And the previous gentleman told you exactly how to do that. We could do it by citizen petition, if not through the council. And number three, let's all express appreciation for public service, right? Including our city manager, Isaiah Hughley, who I must say, thank you, sir. You have made this city a much better city than you found it from the 1980s. So, thank you. Not only you, but it's, you know, Sheriff, uh, Greg Hentraman, who's protected us all so beautifully tonight. We thank them so much. We've got some fantastic public servants in this, in this city, and I appreciate each and every one of, of one of you. So let's have folks on city council who appreciate and understand the value of public service and who appreciate the public servants, whether they're elected, appointed, merit-based, who keep a safe, prosperous, and a much better community than if they were not there. I appreciate all of the public servants. Thank you for your consideration as a concern.
Thank you, Dr. Van Dorn. Thanks, sir. All right, Reverend Richard Jesse, representing the Friends of Historic Claflin. I saw Mr. J. Here he is.
Good evening.
Welcome, sir.
Until I heard all these great speakers, I thought these folk had come because they heard that I was on the agenda. I guess not, maybe not. Um, I'm here to talk about the Liberty District. Uh, what is it? The Liberty District is a sacred area of the black history and culture where men chose to be free, the Liberty District. It was Columbus's Black Wall Street, a mixed-use business, residential, educational, and entertainment zone. Um, can, can, can we pass these out to the council? There are two pages here, so, but I'm going to say I got it in right. The Liberty District is a testament to the values and principles of the greatest generation. That's, uh, the generation that grew up in the 30s, 40s, 50s, and 60s. Uh, a generation that reflected a spiritual foundation in trusting God, gratitude, and honesty. In those days, a person's word was their bond. This generation, commonly characteristics are, they are patriotic, driven and motivated, they show a strong work ethic, live modestly, are fugal consumers, and prudent savers. They are committed to loyalty. They lived through the, and experienced the hardships of the Great Depression and later fought in World War II, or worked in the industries that helped to win that war. In restoring the historic Liberty District, we want to recapture the rich legacy and history, the culture and the characteristics of the mid-20th century, and make this area of Columbus a place of which all of us can be proud. Thanks to our local city government for the 2003 and 2025 Restoration Plan. We are asking for 90 days to get the community involved to help this restoration project reach its true potential. The Friends of Historic Claflin, Inc., FAC, would like to lead this effort in establishing the Historic Liberty District Restoration and Preservation Foundation, a board of directors that will employ the right champion to help manage this great project. The HLDRRF will be an organization like Midtown, Inc., or the Mill District. The Liberty District has the potential to become one of the Columbus' greatest tourist attraction. Uh, this will help us connect with our youth and young adults who will ask, "What is the meaning of this?" And we would be able to tell them that this is a memorial for the life and work of your ancestors from the mid-20th century. Learn about your history. And we want to, uh, have our first organizational meeting this coming Saturday, March 29th, 2025, at 1:00 PM at the Prince Hall Masonic Temple on 6th Avenue. Now, this is a call to our doctors and lawyers and accountants and professionals and managers and those of you who can help make this plan be all that it will be. We're just serving as organizers, but we need all of you to be involved. So this is a call out to particularly the 25 to 55-year-olds to get involved and help us make this what it can be. I got some more time?
Yes, sir.
Hey, city manager, where you go, man? Okay, we, we here for you. Uh, thank you, Mayor. We appreciate you.
Thank you, sir. All right, and that wraps up the public agenda, and I want to thank all of you for, for the most part, being extremely courteous to everybody that spoke. Thank you for that. We've got the city manager's agenda, but we'll let some of these folks that are leaving.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, um, I want to address at least a couple of things that were said, just to set the record straight.
Well, let's, let's wait till they leave so the folks that are here can hear you.
So, Mr. Mayor, I, you know, I hear over and over and over again about So, Mr. Mayor, you know, I hear over and over and over again about money missing. And I want to set the record straight. You know, it had been said that $45 million was missing. And you know, and we know, that the auditors came in from Atlanta, the lawyer and Acutus, the auditing firm, and they determined that that is absolutely not true. And yet, we have not corrected that misstatement. And, and I think we need to, it's time to put that to rest. And putting it to rest means, you know, bring the auditor back in here, the internal auditor, and let her stand there and let her set the record straight. And so, I wanted to say that. And what was noted was that initially, there was $2.5 million in business license fees that had not been collected but was collectible. And not collected but collectible, not missing money. And we need to be fair to the people of Columbus, Georgia about that. And so, I wanted to just say that. And, I mean, we can easily get back into this and, and get the skunk on the table and, and get the facts out. But because you say it over and over again that money is missing and, and no one will come forward, no bank statements were checked, no deposit slips were checked, nothing was verified, we know that because we've been told that by the same group that came in and did the investigation. And so, we ought to be fair to the employees and finance, the deputy city manager, employees and finance who work hard every day. And so, I wanted to say that. And then, the next thing is this thing about my wife and $30,000. And so, we know that that has been played. And so, there are facts surrounding that, and I'm gonna ask the deputy city manager to come and share that because we need to stop allowing people to come and stand at that podium and say things that they don't have facts on. And so, I'm gonna ask you, deputy city manager, to tell us about this AR, these ARP grants. And, and, and yes, my wife did get an ARP grant, around $29,000. But insurance companies, you can name them all over this town, and hair salons, and, you know, people got $40,000 in grants. But would you tell about the grant that, whatever they're trying to say about, I gave it to my wife? Would you provide us some clarity on that?
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mayor, members of council, Mr. City Manager. So, I think what's been referenced is a small business grant that Carolyn Hughley, State Farm agent, received. As you know, the city received over $78 million from ARP funds. The council decided how those funds would be distributed, and that was approved by council. $4,850,000 was allocated to the ARP grant program. That was $40,000 for small businesses, up to $25,000 for nonprofits, and up to $25,000 for economic tourism grants. That program was a partnership with the Greater Columba, Columbus Chamber of Commerce. We held many training sessions with the Chamber of Commerce and the Community Reinvestment Director, Rob Scott. There were requirements of any small business, any nonprofit that wanted to submit, they were extensive requirements. They were, you had to have a business license, you had to be in operation by March 1 of 2019, you had to submit documentation, you had to submit proof of payment, you had to submit W-2s, and all kinds of information was required in order to qualify. This program was administered by the chamber. They went through a process, there was an application process, there was an extensive review process, and a recommendation from the chamber to the city for those businesses that qualified for this program. Again, this was $4.85 million, and we take that very seriously. When we issue checks, we make sure that they're paid to who they need to go to. So, there was an ARP program manager that reviewed all the documentation that was submitted to the city by the chamber. The finance director personally reviewed all the documentation that was submitted before we submitted that information to the city manager. There was a contract that's required to be signed by the small business or the nonprofit, and the city manager acts as the signatory for the city. When the application for his wife came forward to his desk for signature, he did not sign it. He immediately contacted the mayor and the city attorney at that time and asked, how do I handle this particular grant? It's to my wife, I want to be transparent, that's a big word tonight. Wanted to be, he wanted to be transparent with the mayor and the city attorney, and they advised him, do not sign that, that contract. He referred that to me to sign. And I validated that that information was correct, and I signed the agreement, and that was submitted to the finance department for payment. The city manager did not sign that agreement. He saw that it came through and referred it to the mayor and the city attorney's office. So, to be clear, Carolyn Hughley, State Farm, did receive a check in the amount of $29,732.22. Every penny of that was documented, that she qualified for this program, that her business qualified for this program, not her personally, but her small business, just like the rest of the $4,850,000 that was expended on this program. This program was so successful that we applied to the state of Georgia for additional funding for a small business nonprofit grant program and received an additional over $3.5 million to benefit those businesses that were impacted during COVID. So, that is the information on this grant that she received.
And just in closing, you know, law firms received it, I mean, we, and, and, and I announced it at this council, and I had you to pull the clip where I said it at city council. Is that right?
That's correct.
It was said here at the city council. I met with the Black Chamber of Commerce. I told you all that. That was no secret, and people running around like there was some secret, and the city manager gave his wife $30,000. I want you to know the facts, and we ought to be transparent. And I'm prepared, I have been, and will be going forward.
And also, to add to that, a counselor did request all the grants that were issued and who received checks. This was dated August the 5th of 2024. The finance director provided that counselor and all city counselors at that time on August the 9th, 2024, with transaction detail of every business and nonprofit that received that grant. And that grant was on that list, so it has always been a transparent process.
And we need to be transparent, and you've heard me quote the Bernstein Bears before. And I keep saying to people, no matter how you hope, no matter how you try, you cannot make truth out of a lie. And I stand by that.
All right. Thank you, deputy manager.
So, Mayor, first on my agenda, I've got Trade Center Authority, Trade Center Master Plan, and Haley Hillery is here from the Trade Center, and we've been talking about this. And parking space, an additional garage or a new garage for the Trade Center goes all the way back to 2003 in a bond series where we set aside $3.5 million in that bond series. The value of that today is $5 million. And then, we took the special purpose local option sales tax, and we put $5 million in that special purpose local option sales tax to have what we felt would be needed to construct a 500-space parking structure to, to replace what we have. And so, the Trade Center Authority, they've included it in their master plan, and we are asking the city council tonight to adopt the Trade Center's plan for parking garage to be operated and maintained by the consolidated government. And Haley is here if we have questions, but it will be used by hotel patrons, Trade Center patrons, and the general public, and we're asking your approval tonight.
Counselor Aker.
I was gonna make a comment about the auditors. Mr. City Manager requested our internal audit. If we do that, I'd like to call Troutman Pepperback and ask some more detailed questions because citizens are wanting to know where the money was. I, I don't need to keep pounding it down, but.
Okay.
I can withdraw the question, sir. Are we bringing the internal auditor to the podium?
Are we bringing the internal auditor to the podium? No, we're not.
Okay, I'm sorry.
I, I don't believe internal auditor is here, you know? But in a rate, Mayor, the Trade Center Authority master plan is what we're asking your approval on tonight.
Okay, is there any questions or is there a motion to approve Counselor?
We can run through it.
Yeah, well, Haley, you want to? We'll have the Trade Center Director to talk about it.
Good evening, city council, city manager, and mayor. So, in our last, when I was here last, I was able to present this master plan of the Trade Center. The key thing is, is a plan for the future, but one thing that's desperately needed is accurate parking. Parking has been something that has been on the Trade Center plan since 2004, when the renovation took place. And today is your hope that we can get the vote to continue that plan, the RFP process, where we have a vendor that has been chosen, so we can start those discussions, where we can look at final costs, knowing the costs and budget that we have currently for this, to see the final approval on how many parking spots that we can build. I can go into more detail if anybody needs that, but this is just the next step in that process for us to continue to recruit great conferences and conventions to our city to help the economic impact for our citizens and provide service for our citizens as well.
All right, Counselor Kogel, did you have a question or comment?
Haley, thank, I, I just wanted to say, one, thank you for being.
Let's, excuse me, we've still got some business to conduct.
Thank you for being open and, and, and available for the people in this, in the surrounding area. I know that there's, like I said before, has, there's been many meetings on this, and, and I, I really appreciate your back and forth between that. Have we, well, and I'll also say, there are some, still some very real concerns with some of the, the people in that, in that area, in that neighborhood, as far as the cost and the, the true need for the actual parking. Do we know that, do, do we still know when we, if we build this parking garage, if the Marriott will continue to have the 125 spots available and reserved for them within that parking deck? In, basically what I'm saying is that if there's 300 parking spots within that deck, are 125 reserved for the Marriott?
So, that agreement with the Marriott is currently not in, in place. That was an old agreement that took place before this whole process was impacted. So, when that comes to play, there will be conversations where we can look at if we need to reserve parking spots that will go directly to the Marriott. But the last plan of action, when the Marriott was gonna do a hotel expansion, the River Center was gonna be overflow. I'm not saying that patrians can't park there, but it's nothing that has been set in stone as far as a concrete number that's being given to the Marriott.
I guess my concern is that if we're gonna spend, is it five, $5 million from us and $5 million from the Trade, so 10 total, or just five?
Well, it's two, uh, excuse me, it's bond series money, 2003 bond series money, was 3.5, that's now $5 million. And then, from the special purpose local option sales tax, we put in $5 million, so.
So, total of 10?
10, yes.
Right. So, I, I mean, I guess my, my concern is that if we're gonna be building a, a parking deck for, for $10 million, and we're saying to the public that we're having 300 parking spots that ultimately, if you look at the footprint right now, the, the parking lot of the Marriott, when the Marriott is full, is, I mean, I mean, we're now taking those parking spots and taking them away from the public that the public has paid for. And so, I guess I, I have some concerns in that that has not worked out before we even move forward when we're, when then we're saying to the public that really we only have 175 parking spots available.
So, the 300 number is what was on the 2003 bond?
That's correct.
So, the number that we're looking at building is close to 500. That is the hopes with calls. So, you're looking at 500 in the new parking deck and also having our existing parking deck in the meantime, that would offset the need for parking that we need for our community.
So, so that is absolutely correct, you know?
From the 2003.
And I think that may be a little bit confusing, but when we did the 3.5 million 2003 bond, it was gonna be 300 parking spaces.
Well, but regardless of, of the parking spots, if the, if the Marriott, like, if, if we're, we're basically paying, the public is actually, is basically paying for spots that are gonna be reserved for the Marriott and not accessible for the public, correct? If the Marriott is gonna use the parking deck as well.
Not from my understanding, as of right now, there's been no agreement with the Marriott as far as parking dedicated to that hotel.
Right. So, where are the people for the Marriott going to park? Because we're taking away their parking spot, their, their.
So, it, so is city parking. The Trade Center parking garage will still be open to city patrians. And the good thing about the convention center, since the Marriott will be the convention hotel currently, that's gonna be a lot of our same patrians using that parking that's also using the Trade Center. And keeping people off the streets.
So, when.
So, basically, there's no, there's no, there's, there's been no discussion between the Marriott and the city on using the city's parking garage?
And I think when you say hotel patrons, you're talking about the, a future hotel. You're not talking about.
I'm talking about the Marriott, like, as it, as it stands right now. I mean.
I understand. And, and as the director said, the Marriott people, I think some of them already park in the parking, the city's parking garage.
In, in that park, in that parking footprint? On, off of, like, I mean, if you.
Are you talking about in the location where the new garage will be built?
Correct.
So, all I know right now, when those, when this process goes, we need additional parking. I know part of the overflow agreement was River Center parking. However, this will also be city parking additionally. So, the Marriott should not have a problem with parking, and we should still have the additional parking that's needed to bring in more events.
Right. But what I'm, but what I'm saying is that the patrons from the, at the Marriott, which is not a city, city-owned entity, are going to be parking in a parking garage that the citizens are paying for when the, when they, I mean, they should be either renting that, those spots, or, or we have to build a, a bigger garage.
Well, I, I would say if we, if we were.
Or say they can't park there.
If we, if we do, like, other communities and charge for parking, then they would, they could lease from us in the River Center parking garage a number of spaces for their valid parking and, you know.
Right. But, but what we're telling the public is that we're building 300 parking spots for $10 million.
Let me correct that, it's 500.
Okay, 500 parking spots for, whatever the number is, we're, we're telling the, we're telling the public that 125 are going to be used for the Marriott parking and reserved for Marriott parking, and there's no, there's been no discussion back and forth, and so.
The 125 number, that is never, there's, I have not seen anything listed that is guaranteed and that's parking for the Marriott at all.
Okay, we're, we're asking the public to pay for Marriott parking for.
I guess I'm not seeing it that way.
No.
And I just wanna make sure, I, I wanna make sure I'm communicating because I wanna make sure the citizens also have a clear understanding, just like you do. I just, I know as far as parking goes, the additional parking that this parking garage is gonna support will cover the needs that are needed for the convention hotel, for the city, for the citizens to all have accurate parking downtown.
Okay. My other concerns are that. Okay, my other concerns are that, I mean, we still, there is still a plan for the 8th Street corridor, and I know that that is also a really big concern for that historic district. And there has, you know, I have, I have listened to numerous people down there having concerns on how that is going to affect the flow of traffic back and forth. And I just, I know, the way I view it is, I would, and also the neighbors in that particular area would also like to actually have a solid plan for the 8th Street corridor prior to committing to a parking deck.
So on the 8th Street, we are planning a separate public meeting to talk about the 8th Street improvements, separate from the Trade Center parking, along with the stormwater improvements for Broadway. So we are working to schedule that meeting sometime in April. So we'll have another public meeting related to 8th Street improvements and the Broadway stormwater.
And I guess the concern is that that should be taken care of. The entrance and exit should be taken care of prior to building the parking deck and not as an afterthought of now we're gonna, now we're gonna have a flow of traffic. We're gonna fix that flow of traffic.
So the 8th Street improvements should deter the flow of traffic because it's roundabouts, there is the raised sidewalks. So it really should deter traffic from going down 8th Street. And I think in the presentation that they did with the Trade Center parking garage, the thought is to divert traffic leaving that parking garage to 9th Street and not into the historic district. So they're kind of working in tandem, and they're, we're trying to keep them separate. They're separate projects and separate funding sources. Obviously, it impacts the same historic district, but they are different projects.
And then my last question, has, I know, I know Haley, I know you did a parking study or a traffic study of the traffic going up and down and particularly during Christmas in the South and some of the other conferences where there's mass exiting and entrance. Was there ever a part, a study done on how many parking spots there are in relation to the extra hotels? So like, if I'm staying in Atlanta, one of my, one of the, one of the things that I do is stay in my parking, in my parking spot within my hotel, and I walk to the Convention Center. Is that an option? Has there been any study on, we have 400 extra rooms downtown, and can people, we push for a more walkable city. Can we keep those people in their parking spots within their hotel and have people walk towards the Trade Center? Or are they getting out of their car and walk, or are they getting out of their hotel, driving two blocks, parking in a parking deck, and then doing their conference and then driving back?
That's a great question, and to have, to say there's been an official study done, no. But I will say, the conference we have in town right now that has close to 2,000 students and advisors and volunteers, you'll see that they're walking from the hotels. They're using Front Avenue, and we're still having a parking situation. So I think with the growth that we're wanting to see and considering that this is a master plan for future, if we don't fix this issue now and having an official convention parking garage for the future of a convention hotel, we're not gonna see the growth that we need for the city. And that's the major plan, is seeing that we're able to recruit talent, recruit conferences and conventions we've never had before, and we wanna keep that momentum going. So we do have people that are walking from these hotels. Metro with the shuttle system has been wonderful to have that type of service, but it's only gonna continue to grow, and parking is still gonna be a need.
I mean, I would like to see what, from the travel bureau, how many people are staying and are coming to the Trade Center and driving back and forth. I just, I think that there's a better way than taking a risk of spending $10 million, which I'm not entirely sure is also gonna cover that cost. So that's all I have, thanks.
So before you leave the podium, and with Deputy City Manager Pam Hodge, you know, I know the written report is confusing because it mentions 300 parking spaces, a couple of different times. The number of parking space, spaces will be 500 approximately, give or take.
That's correct.
500, not 300. And the 300 was picked up because the original 2003B bond was going to get 300 parking spaces back 20 years ago, 22 years ago. And, and so that's been mentioned because of the 2003B series bond. With that money and with interest over the 23 years, that we've got $5 million there. And so with the $5 million from the special purpose local option sales tax, 10 million will get 500 plus or minus, not exact spaces, but forget the 300, it's 500 is the goal. Is that right?
That's correct.
And so your authority, your board, adopted the master plan with those dollars that I've mentioned, with 500 parking spaces, plus or minus. And we're simply asking the City Council tonight, your authority, your board, is asking City Council to approve the master plan.
That's correct.
And that's the vote that she's looking for tonight.
Okay. Mr. Aker?
Hillary, I also appreciate what you're doing for Trade Center. We wanna protect that great asset in our city. I wanna see more tourism. I'm proud of what we're doing downtown. I have a lot more questions than I have answers. I'm not gonna ask all of them, but I made several phone calls. I'm trying to catch up with things. I called a construction company, I called two local hotels downtown to ask some questions. One of them, two of them informed me their occupancy rates, which were lower than I anticipated that they would be. I wanted to know, generally, if you have a budget, I heard Joanne say $10 million for the hotel, but a construction company informed me on a brand-new bill, ground up, it would be $50,000 per space, and 500 is easy math for 25 million. So, you know, moving forward, and then I heard her say that, how much is it gonna be? Is the first question, generally speaking, in the master plan. Secondly, did we do what we said we were gonna do in fixing up the existing parking places many years ago? And maybe I can wait and we can have dialogue. The other thing is, are you aware of a memorandum that Carmen Cavaiza signed with the Marriott Hotel about these parking spaces?
The memo that you may be referring to, is it back from 2003?
It was.
And I know that when, right before COVID, there was a new memo that was created when the hotel was going to expand to be a hotel expansion and where the overflow parking was gonna be taken to the River Center. So that memo, I know, is more to our current date than it does in 2003.
Yeah, and of course, I'm familiar with it.
Yes.
Back then, City Manager Carmen Cavaiza did sign an agreement because there was negotiation going on to expand the Marriott. And they were going to expand the hotel, and, and we were going to provide, I believe it was 82 spaces back then, 82 spaces. And so, as you know, the expansion has not materialized. And that agreement expired some time ago. Is that right, Haley?
That's correct.
And, and so that agreement does not exist anymore.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Is the $50,000 number an expectation that's reasonable?
So, one thing I do want to, not go into too many details. We are doing a design, not a design-build, where we're trying to keep the cost down. We are definitely not gonna cut costs when it comes to the aesthetics and making sure it fits in the historic district, aesthetics and view, and making sure it doesn't look like something that doesn't fit in that community. So what the next step, the RFP process, the vendors that have applied through the RFP process knows what our budget is and knows what we're working with. And then everything that was presented to the RFP committee, they saw the different percentages that are gonna be allocated. Now, part of this approval today will allow us to now have those discussions with the vendor that was chosen, where we can look at some of those hard costs. I am not anticipating that much per parking spot. I do know that certain parking spots are around that cost, but not for the type of design that we anticipate to do for this garage.
I think only, two more questions. One that I did ask is about a remodel in the existing. Do we have 300 existing spots now? Are those gonna stay, and have we remodeled those like we said we would?
So part of the renovation is for the parking garage itself. Now, the actual spots that we have currently does need some upkeep. The part of the master plan that has been presented, that parking garage will still be intact until the future if we look at building a hotel on that property. So as far as right now, it's not a modern facility, so modern vehicles cannot park in that. And there's really nothing we can do besides tearing the whole thing down and rebuilding, but part of the master plan shows that this is a better direction to go in order for growth for our city and being able to have an official convention hotel attached to our building.
Is any of the master plan including a remodel of the Trade Center with fresh carpet, lighting, other things like that?
I'm actually getting new carpet installed right now. So new carpets in our building, fiber optics being installed. And one thing I want to remind is, everything that's taking place right now, these renovations, I do not touch general fund with the city. The hard work that our employees do, the great participation that our citizens, when they choose the Trade Center, we're able to build our revenue fund to be able, our reserve fund, to be able to offset some of these expensive projects. So everything that's taking place right now is due to Trade Center revenue that brought in for the city impact.
So you're neutral?
Yes, so those renovations are taking place. And if you go in our ballroom right now, it is brand-new carpet.
Very good, good job, thank you. Have you talked to enough citizens about what we're trying to do in the expenditures and how we're gonna keep that revenue neutral? If we're doing that and creating value, I'm happy with it. But I'm very concerned that we're overspending on this spot at this moment.
So my goal as a Trade Center, and I'm very, I guess transparent's the word, I'm very transparent with this, I treat the Trade Center as a business. I want it to be a place where citizens can come, they feel safe, they create memories. Our slogan is to make history, but I also look at costs on everything. And I've learned how to negotiate with vendors and make sure that we're using the dollars that are funded through us, through hotel motel tax, through beer tax, that we're doing that wisely. So to have that conversation, I can always share that, but the goal is always, my goal is to always come in a profit every year and to be able to put that in reserves for special projects to keep the building its integrity that it is today.
Very good job. Mr. City Manager, can you help me here? Moving forward with the Trade Center master plan is, is an expenditure. It's not moving forward on approving this, is it? It's just a moving forward on a plan.
This is authorizing them, as the Director said, I think, once you, they don't wanna go and negotiate in the RFP with their preferred vendor, and the Council is not, is not on board with them with their master plan. And this would simply approve the master plan. This is a Trade Center authority and not a city department, per se. Haley does not report to me. She reports to the authority. The authority has adopted a master plan, and they're saying to city, you know, since you do provide us some hotel motel tax and beer tax, you know, here's the master plan that we're sending to you for your, for your concurrence, and then they're going to move forward once you do that.
All right, thank you, sir. Counselor Crabbe.
Thank you. Okay, so I wanna go back to this. We're saying 500 parking spots, but this is saying 300. I, I'd like to get that, that language cleared up. I'd like that to be cleaned up, and then we vote on, we vote on one that says the right things, that says 500 vehicles. And then I'm a little, I'm still a little bit concerned because it says here in the language, "It will be used by hotel patrons." And so it seems like we should be negotiating with the hotels so that we have an idea how many parking spaces are going to hotel patrons before we start this whole project.
So let me address the 300. If you go back to the official statement, these were Columbus Building Authority bonds back in 2003. It was a B series, which is the taxable bonds. And so they were issued as taxable bonds back in 2003. In the project description, in the official statement for those bonds, that money, the three and a half million, was for 300 spaces. So the reason that verbiage is in there is I pulled the project description from the official statements for those bonds, word for word.
But what about the 200 extra spaces?
So now, when we added the sploß to it, we're at 500 plus or minus spaces.
Then why doesn't the language say, you know, this 300 for the bond and, you know, the, the number for the sploß? And, you know, to add it to the 500 parking? Because isn't the overall plan saying that there's gonna be 500 parking spots?
That's correct.
Yeah.
It doesn't say it anywhere in here that there's gonna be 500 spots. It does, I do see where it talks about the funding coming from the sploß and the funding coming from the, the series 2003B. I, I see what you just said there, but I don't see where it's saying the additional spaces. Oh, I see here. Okay, the voter approved a special purpose local option sales tax in November 2021, which included 5 million for improvements to the parking facility of the Trade Center to provide for approximately 500 spaces. But it's not saying it here.
Well, why don't we, Mayor, I think to clear it up, we can, if you need to do an amendment to say that the 2003B bond money combined with the sales tax money for $10 million will construct 500 plus or minus parking spaces in the garage for the Trade Center. And I think that will clear up the language. I think what staff, what they've tried to do is acknowledge the 2003B bond money was for 300 spaces. And, you know, because we did do a bond for that. And, but, but, but you obviously can't, you can't do 300 spaces today for that 3.5 million because it's got interest. But, but I say clear up the language so that Haley can, and her board can go back and move forward.
Right, in the agenda summary, it should have, it should have those additional 200 vehicles, parking spots. It's buried in this that, and it needs.
Yeah, who, somebody wanna author it?
To clear up the language, you know.
I'd like to make that motion that the additional 200 spaces are brought in and shown in this agenda summary.
All right, there's a motion in a second to clean up the language so that they match, the numbers match. Any other discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Okay, all those in favor, please raise your right hand.
Of the, of my motion?
Okay, never mind. So it was unanimous on the, on the amendment? All right.
So that we approve number one?
Not yet, so we. There's a motion in a second to approve the master plan. Any other discussion?
I, I still, the other, my other point was the discussion with the hotels that are gonna be using some of these spaces. We haven't negotiated that, and so I think that that's an important thing that we negotiate before we, we do this because it's, it's going to be subtracting parking spots from this total. And it just seems like that, we're getting the cart before the horse if we don't know.
Keep in mind, there are, there are a lot of, there are a lot of parking spaces there because of the garages that are nearby. And they've actually, I know on, on different occasions, and they've worked through a number of different iterations of an agreement with the Marriott, trying to come up with an agreement when they were gonna build another tower, they were gonna put a catwalk across the road. And then when COVID hit, I know they, it impacted a lot of people, so that was off the table. So that means we had to switch to try to find a way to continue to provide parking for people who are using not just the hotel, but the Trade Center as well. And if they can't get in the new spaces, you've got the River Center, which is just right across the street, you've got the, is it Sonovus Front Avenue parking lot? You've got the Sonovus Front Avenue parking lot, parking garage. It's just a half a block away.
So, have those discussions been made? Because I received an email from, from someone and it didn't sound like the Marriott had been consulted or spoken.
I've spoken personally with Representative Marriott.
So, Mayor, and Haley, if you can respond to this. When you mentioned hotel in here, you're not talking about the Marriott?
No. So, the master plan is a future convention hotel.
Exactly.
As far as the Marriott concerns, this is, again, it's a plan. It's able for us to proceed with the need in parking and for us to start those conversations, to know those true costs and what's going to take place with this parking garage. And then speaking to the Marriott, the Marriott's not blindsided by this. We've had conversations with them. They are currently charging for parking right now. We're looking at availability to partner with all of our hotels. We want all of our hotels to be successful because it's a partnership on tourism and development and everything else. So, I'm not going to forget about our hotels. We're going to make sure that those patrons are having a great experience because if they're going to the Marriott and the future convention hotel down the road, more than likely, they're attending the Trade Center event.
So, and Ellen? So, you've been communicating with the Marriott?
We've had, I mean, we've had conversations throughout the years. Now, I know the mayor has sat down specifically with some of the leadership there recently. But as far as us looking at numbers of spaces and what that looks like, as of right now, the overflow is the River Center.
Sure.
All right. There is a motion. Was there a second to approve? All right, so we've got a motion and a second. Mr. Anker, is this to the motion? Okay, we've got a motion and a second. All in, well, we can put it up on the screen and councilors, you can register your vote. Got a couple more.
I know. This is just a really tough one for me.
What's your, just give, you can give a voice vote. So, it's inconclusive. Yep, it's inconclusive. We'll have to bring it back in the next meeting.
Okay, Haley.
Thank you all so much.
All right, thank you. So, next on the agenda, Mayor, is South Commons redevelopment. And we are not asking for a vote on this tonight, Mayor. But just, I don't know if Seven Hollinsworth is here from the Development Authority. But Deputy City Manager Hodge, you want to talk about what this development is about that goes along with the baseball stadium?
Sure. Good evening again, Mayor and Council. This proposal is to request the Development Authority, who is our economic development arm of the city, to issue a request for proposal to see what is out there for development of the areas surrounding South Commons. We've divided those areas into A, B, and C. They can be divided however, but we want the Development Authority to issue the request for proposals, to vet them and come back to council. This does not transfer land to the Development Authority. This is only to release the RFP for development. We want to know what the interest is out there. This is just a concept of what it could look like, what it could be at South Commons to complement the baseball stadium. It shows a lot of green space that's added. That sea of asphalt is replaced with housing, retail, hotels, park space. It does include parking garage, obviously. You're getting rid of a parking lot. You have to have a place for the patrons that attend the baseball games or the South Commons amenities, the ball fields, A.J. McClung, the Civic Center, or the ice rink. So, these are just some renderings, concepts of what it could look like. But what we want is for developers to submit their proposals. And we can see what the interest is out for developing this much-needed area of our community in South Columbus. A lot of green space in this particular concept, that's going to be important to us. Also, where the skateboard park, whether it remains in its current location or it's relocated somewhere on the site, that will be something that will be included in the RFP that we'll ask for that information from any developer that has an interest in this area. So, that is what we're trying to accomplish is to utilize the economic development arm of the city with the Development Authority to issue RFP for those proposals.
Councilor Crabbe.
Is A, B, and C in a TAD district?
Yes. There, this particular area is part of the Sixth Avenue Liberty District TAD. Currently, there's $2.4 million in that TAD. Council has already authorized 1.6 million for A.J. McClung. We have done an assessment on A.J. McClung and we'll be coming back to council with that report in April. So, we did just receive the assessment back on A.J. McClung.
I've been hearing, you know, that this redevelopment in this area needs to happen in order to pay for the baseball. But how does that work if it's, if it's developed into a TAD? Because they, because if it's in a TAD, we're not going to, we're not going to be able to collect those taxes the way we're, no, sorry. We're, yeah, we're basist out. You know, we're, we're only able to collect on the basis and not on the development. And so, we're not going to make the money that everybody's saying that we're going to make as long as it's in a TAD.
So, there's property tax revenue, and you're correct. The increment would go into the tax allocation district, which is controlled by city council. So, how those funds are utilized is controlled ultimately by city council. But there is additional sales tax revenue that would be beneficial to the city and other revenue that would, would come to the city. But you are correct, it's in a TAD and the property tax revenue would go into the TAD, the increment.
Unless, unless council set a sunset on it, which is certainly within their purview. You know, in all likelihood, some of it would be, I think it would help with A.J. McClung Stadium. And it would also help with, with some of the parking to whoever the developer is. You know, some loan that they pull some of that out of there and then set the ceiling. And then once that's done, because this isn't going anywhere. Once it's there, that money starts coming and comes in every year. So, once you cap that TAD, let it sunset, now you've got that same money going straight into the general fund. And then it's up to council, you could do whatever you wanted with it. You could identify certain needs that you wanted to continue to go to or it just supplements the general fund during the normal budget process.
And so, so that people who are here, Mayor, and listening by television and those in the overflow room know, when you say increment, you know, the property tax that we collect on that property or we work collecting before the TAD, that, we continue to get that revenue.
That's correct.
And then the growth based on development after completing, implementing the TAD becomes available for other things, infrastructure and other things. But all of it is controlled by the city council.
That's correct. Any, any increment, when you're talking about increment, it's, there was a base that was set when that tax allocation district was started. That base continues to come to the city and to the school district.
Yes.
Anything above that base, which we call increment, goes into a separate fund that's managed by the city. And it's not only the city taxes that goes into that fund, it's also the school district taxes. They agree to participate in this TAD and allow their increment to also go into the TAD to support economic development in that district. So, any funds in the TAD has to be spent in that TAD district. So, it's the Liberty District all the way down and includes South Commons is in that tax allocation district. But it's all controlled by city council.
So.
Counselor Huff?
If you would, notate the skate, skateboard park. I met with them, spoke to them last year and see if, if we're moving the park to create a competition skateboard park, kind of like what you see on ESPN. So, not only can they enjoy it locally, but they could bring in some revenues and things as far as not having to leave town to compete nationally. And maybe we could have some competitions like we had for Whitewater Raptor.
And I think there are some opportunities if we did a redesign on the skateboard park and relocated it to a different area to address some of those things that you're talking about, Counselor Huff.
Okay.
So, that does create some opportunities for that.
Thank you.
Counselor Anker?
Mr. Mayor, I heard you mention a sunset in the TAD district. And I'm really happy about the development and what we're doing. We've made the choice to move forward on baseball and want to see this be a great success for building an economy and a tax base. But, you know, all citizens are invested in this. And I would like to see the TAD district go away sooner, not, not later. I don't know what a sunset means, but I even have two properties in that TAD district. And I, I just feel like it's the city's investment and it's got to stand on its own economically and that we have to put that in there. I don't know where it comes in, if it can, it has to come in now before we vote or it has to come in later. If it can't go in there now, I have a concern.
Yeah. It doesn't have any impact on this, on this is, all this is doing is asking people who are interested in putting some development there. It's just asking them what they imagine it being. Once that's done, there's still, it doesn't transfer any property. It doesn't commit any financing. It just allows us to take a look at it. And then I think we have time, because I, I think you're right. I think we should put something together so that we use that tool for what it was intended, which is to get that development up so that long-term, long, long-term, it will generate revenue for the city of Columbus. Whether it goes in your right pocket or your left pocket, there's money coming into the citizens of Columbus. Otherwise, that baseball was a $50 million foolish thing to do, frankly. Because this is, this is the part A1 of that piece. Once the baseball was done, the only way to really pull any money back in is.
If we're just moving forward in theory to, I mean, not in theory, we're doing it, to give it to the Development Authority to do this, I think we ought to put some teeth in there for public hearings and try to really get some real encouragement in this.
We will, we will. I can't imagine us not having public hearings. And typically what happens is when those proposals or concepts come in, then we try to look at which one we like. If we could include the public in that to some degree, too. We've done that before with things like this, where we'll go out there and actually had electronic means by which to kind of rate which one they liked, which one they didn't like. And then we, you know, it'll be driven by, by the citizens.
And last question, I know I'm asking too many, but this comes back to us again after the Development Authority, is that correct?
Yep.
Thank you. Okay, Mayor.
Well, we got a few, Counselor Kogle? Wait, wait, wait. I lost you.
There we go.
Hey, you, okay.
For the, while we're talking about the RFP and potential and when it comes back, do you, has, has there been any site development on, on the A, B, and C? As far as like what the, what some top-tier developers would need in order to do like an accurate or like a high-quality RFP?
We have, we have not done any, any work on the site, like surveys. We, that has not happened.
Is that something that we can get the Development Authority involved in prior to the, to the RFP? Because, I mean, and to quote Counselor Davis, who's not here, we only have one chance at this, right? And so, you know, if we're looking at, if we're looking at creating something that's going to be successful and is going to keep baseball around for 30 years, I, I think it would be really important if we were a little bit proactive and did the site development prior to opening it up to an RFP and so that we would have access to those developers who would put in the highest quality development rather than just pass us over for, well, they don't have all the information that I need. I can go off to do a deal somewhere else.
And that would typically be handled through the Development Authority.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. I think that's it.
Okay. Thank you, Deputy City Manager. So, next I've got a couple of grants. First one is.
All right, there's a motion and a second to approve items three, four, and five. Is there anyone that anyone would like pulled? All right. Hearing none. If you put it on the screen and councilors, this again, even though you're voting once, you're voting for all three of those.
And, and Mayor, these are grants with no match requirement so that you know.
Okay, that's, that's approved.
Okay.
There's a motion to approve item six, donation to police department. Is there any discussion on that item? All right, if you would, put it on the screen. Counselor Crabbe? Counselor Hickey, you want to? All right, that's approved.
So, Mayor, based on no action on the master plan for the Trade Center, I'm going to ask to delay A on the purchase agenda. And so, B would be auditing services. This is our, the annual contract with Malden and Jenkins to provide auditing services for the finance department.
All right. There's, there's been a motion to approve item B through Z. And a second, is there, which ones would like, you like pulled? Yep. Okay. Any others?
Well, that's.
We can go, we can go through, we can go through them individually.
Okay. Yeah, I'll just go through them one at a time, Mayor.
Okay.
Okay, did you, I think you approved B.
No, there's a, there's a motion and a second, withdraw the motion. Okay, so no, we've got to deal with B.
Okay. So, B would be the auditing services for Malden and Jenkins, the external auditor, and asking your approval to move forward.
Is there a motion to approve the Malden and Jenkins? All right, there's a motion and a second. Counselor Tucker to the motion?
Yes, it was to the motion. I know it was a lot of conversations around this auditing services. And I wanted to ask you because I'm not sure what I can and cannot say. With me serving as vice chair of the Audit Committee, we had a lot of meetings. And I think we had a, our last meeting was March 15. I think it was. I can't remember. I can't remember, but it was on a Friday, I just know it was a Friday. And, and what I really want to put out there, because it was a lot of constituents and citizens that were commenting about this and how we came to picking this audit firm. And I wanted to clear up some things in reference to what the external auditor is and what it isn't. So citizens can be clear what we're approving, what the auditor does, what, what performances that they do when we approve this action right now.
So what the external audit does is they do the audit for the city, the entire city. They are making sure that the financial statements that we produce are presented fairly. They do not check every single transaction, they do sampling, they look at internal controls. They look to make sure that the information that we present to the public and to our financing companies, that it's accurate. And so that is the purpose of the external audit. They are not the internal audit, they have a completely different function. So this is our external audit to validates that our annual financial report is accurate and correct.
And we, we say our annual financial report, that includes, they look at our budget and things like that? Like what's all included in what they look at?
So they do the balance sheet transaction or the balance sheet, they do the statement of cash flow, they do budget to actual statements. Everything in that annual report that is presented, it's online, it's a 200-plus-page document. They also do our single audit, which looks at all of our grant programs and validates our grants, that we're in compliance with our grants from a financial reporting standpoint.
So one of the things that we cleared up on that Friday is when they come, we take our audits very seriously and they will spend more time providing information to the citizens in reference to what the external audit is and what it is not. And that's something that we discussed on that Friday prior to us actually voting to approve the, the external auditor and to bring it before council. So that was the conversation and we, we addressed, you know, how misinformation is, happens. These are things that we discussed on this call about misinformation and misleading information. And they said that from now on, they will only provide what they actually do, but they will also inform the citizens what they do not do, which is the internal auditor functions. So all that deep dive information, they don't do that.
No, they do not look at every single transaction. We are a huge organization, $1.2 billion worth of assets. They could not possibly look at every single transaction. But they do validate our internal control process and we have an extensive internal control process of how cash is received, cash is recorded, how cash goes out, how checks are issued. There is an approval process, they validate those types of internal controls. And they do issue a management letter. If there's a concern that they have about an internal control process, there are findings. This past year, we didn't have any findings, everything that they tested, everything they looked at, they had no findings in our last audit, external audit that they presented just recently.
And, and I know that some things kind of went over, but, you know, even they mentioned, they only did 10 business licenses. Out of 9,000, I think we got close to 9,000 business license. So this is information that citizens need to know of what the external auditor does. And it is not what the internal auditor does. It has nothing to do with investigations or anything, it's transactional. So I just wanted to make sure that we got that on record, what the external auditor is and what it is not. And what we're approving now is what the performances that they actually do and it's listed within this, this agenda.
That's correct, it is listed. And, and just to talk about the process briefly, the Audit Committee is a new, is a new committee with the city. And so the Audit Committee was a participant in this process along with myself and other internal staff members through that process. So the Audit Committee did take an active role in the selection process.
That's why I was saying, I don't know what I can and cannot release in reference to that part, but thank you. I appreciate you for playing it up.
All right, Counselor Crabbe, is it to the motion?
Pam.
Pam. Sorry. Um, could you? Could you tell us, like, what the pros and cons of using the same external auditor every year is?
So definitely a pro, especially with this company that's being recommended, is they're probably the number one audit firm in the state of Georgia, if not the southeast. They do 776 other state, local municipalities, governmental entities. They are what I would consider the expert in governmental auditing within the state and again, within the southeast. They, there's a zero learning curve, right? They've been auditing us for numerous years, so the transition is, is very simple. You bring in a new auditor and they have to, there's a, there's a long learning curve with a new auditor. They do change up the audit team so that there is a different set of eyes from this particular audit firm. They, so they do bring in a new team, but they would have the notes from the, the prior audits. So I think that's important, that they do have a different set of eyes that look at our, our financial information. They do, yes, as Counselor Tucker mentioned, they do provide training at no cost to us. That's part of their services to us. And they're very well-known in GGFOA, which is the Georgia Government Finance Officers Association. They do a lot of the training for GGFOA and for GFOA, the National Government Finance Officers Association. So they're very well-known within our air, our expertise.
Thank you, I appreciate.
Lindsey, did we have a motion and a second? All right, there is a motion, a second, no more lights are on. All those in fact, well, we can put it on the screen. Counselors, if you please, enter your votes. All right, that's approved.
Okay, so C, I've got bullet recovery system for police department.
Motion second to approve item C, any discussion? All right, please put it on the screen. All right, that's approved.
I've got D would be temporary staffing services. This is an extension of the annual contract for temporary staffing for global personnel services.
There's a motion second to approve, any discussion? All right, put it on the screen, please. Madam Clerk, did you have?
Yes, sir. I just want to state for the record that Counselor Hickey was in favor of item C.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, that's approved. Item D is approved.
I've got additional sources.
Counselor Crabbe, did you have a question or a comment? Okay, well, we are now there, so let's.
So E would be additional services for temporary staffing, Mayor. And these are all on state contract and would be additional sources for city departments to access temporary staffing needs. But they've gone through all of the vetting process, they own our state contract and they would, they can use these in addition to the ones in D on an as-needed basis.
Okay, so my question was, on D, you were very specific and you, you know, and that was a contract for temporary staffing for the Civic Center. But E is general, it doesn't have any departments, it's, it's a little bit more vague. And so what departments use, uses the temporary staffing services in that contract?
In, in D?
In E.
In E.
In D, you, you said Civic Center, but in this one, there's no departments listed.
Any city department could utilize temporary services that are on state contract. It's like buying the vehicle off state contract.
All right, item F? Oh, we didn't vote on E? Motion to approve, is there a second? All right, second, I'll, if you'll put it on the screen. Okay, it's approved.
So F would be three paratransit buses for Metro and these are also from the state contract.
All right, Counselor Crabbe?
Thank you. I do have a question, how are we coming on the Brookstone Center extension of the paratransit buses?
The study is in process.
How long does a study usually take?
I, I can't, I don't have, you know, how long it's going to take, but they're working. It's been contracted and they're working on it.
Can we get an update on that next, next meeting? Because it seems like it's taking a long time. And where are we going to use these paratransit buses if, if we're not having the additional routes?
You're going to use them because buses get old and you have to replace them.
Okay.
Counselor Tucker?
Yes, just, just so citizens can know, in reference to items, I'm trying to see, F? And G? Which budget line item is that coming from?
Funds are budgeted each fiscal year, as you know, from, for these buses. But they, these are 80, 20 match. Federal government, state government, local government make up 20%, but federal government 80%. So it's in the Transportation Fund, the FTA budget, as it shows on the report. And then, of course, Metro. So it's federal, state, and local dollars.
And I, I actually pulled it up in the budget, FY25, I was just asking so the citizens can know, because we had several people asking that question, it's easier to say it here. That way you don't have to keep repeating it, phone call, phone call, phone call. So, thank you. Second.
All right, there's a motion to approve F and G, to the motion, Counselor Anker?
I wanted to ask about the paratransit buses also, Mr. City Manager. It, is the 730 out of the, you said it was matched with federal?
It's 80% federal, 10% state, 10% local.
10% local, so of the 730, only the 10% of that's what we're paying.
That's correct.
Yes, sir. And how many paratransit vehicles do we have currently in Metro?
Let me get that total, 15.
15, okay. Would it ever make sense and would we be allowed to kind of stage them in a little bit as opposed to all three of them at once? Would we lose those grants if we could just wait a little bit and stage them in?
Well, I think that is staging them in.
Three?
Yes.
So that'd be, you're going to buy three a year and do it that way?
Not necessarily, the, the life of a bus is typically five years or 100,000 miles.
Okay, I have a lot more questions. Ma'am?
Yeah, it's five years or 100,000 miles.
I was going to say the life of a paratransit bus is, is what he has indicated, but the life of a larger bus is about 12 years.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, any other questions?
There's motion, a second. Doesn't look like there's any more discussion, so if you would, put it on the screen.
So was that F and G?
It's F and G, so that one, I'm, thank you for pointing that out. So that one vote will approve both those items.
So H is a rescue pumper for fire service apparatus, is 194,000.
There's a motion second to approve that apparatus, any discussion on that item? All right, please put it on the screen and Counselors can register their vote. It's approved.
I and J would be household trash carts for public works, black carts in the first one, and I, and blue carts in J.
Motion and second to approve I and J, any discussion on those two? All right, please put it on the screen and remember that when you vote at one time, it votes for both items. Okay.
And K is a vector check software for Fire EMS.
Motion second to approve K, if you would, put it on the screen. All right, that's approved.
L as upgrade purchase of fare boxes with, for Metro.
Motion to approve L, have a motion and a second to approve L, if you would, put that on the screen. All right, that's approved.
So a number of these will follow will be equipment and various items for the Civic Center.
Motion and a second to approve M through S. If you would, put that on the screen and again, remember that all seven of those items will be approved with one vote. Hate to keep putting that on the record, but our tech folks say we need to do that, so. Okay.
So I've got camera equipment for the Civic Center, metal storage building for the Civic Center.
It didn't register? Well, you can voice vote. You can voice vote, you can just tell. You can abstain.
Battery-operated.
Wait, wait, just a second. So you'll need to vote for or against it? Which one? Okay.
Battery-operated ice edger for the Civic Center.
Well, we, we have to pull that one and take a look at it, because we approved all of those, I think. And we've got one no vote, which item was that, that you didn't? The truck.
I guess I want to know what it's used for.
Okay.
Uh, that's item P.
Item P?
Yes.
Okay. So let's, are there, were there any other items that?
And maybe we'd, we'd skip down to item Y?
Well, let's, let's, we haven't gotten there yet.
All right, that's the main one.
Let's do, on P, what, what will that truck be used for, Mr. City Manager, I really?
Um, this is a, it's a dump truck is really what it is. The Civic Center, as you know, I mean, they, they still have to collect a whole lot, hauling things from, you know, to be able to take heavy things from one area to another area within the complex, and that's what this is for. They do currently have a dump truck, but they had to salvage that because it was just, you know. They do currently have a dump truck, but they had to salvage that because it was just, you know, this is a replacement because of the issues that they've had with it, so this is their one and only dump truck that they will have.
What year was that truck, please?
I I don't, I can find, I can find out for you.
I can vote for it, thank you.
Okay, all right, so we'll just leave that as it is then. He, I think Ms. Anker changed his vote to for it. All right, thank you, sir.
So we're moving on, hockey, glass support post, additional staging equipment for civic center, what did they go through? You moved for compressor replacement for the civic center, I think yes, yeah. And so then we've got T with the outdoor tape.
All right, there's a motion and a second to approve T, please put it on the screen.
Then we've got a for, excuse me, T.
All right, there's a motion and a second to approve items U through X, does anyone want one of those pulled? All right, please put it on the screen, and once again, all four will be approved with that one vote. Counselor Crabbe? Thank you, ma'am, that's that's approved.
Okay, so we're on U, I believe. Fort lift for the civic center. And then we've got scissor lift for the civic center, event radios, and mobile light tower for the civic center. And Y is a forklift for the civic center. But that may be the wrong caption, because it shows two.
Well, we've we've already approved U through X, I think, we just, we, you can approve Y and Z, though. You can make a motion to approve those two.
And and Mayor, why should show a van and not a forklift?
Well, my mine does show a van.
Okay, well, mine is the head and it's wrong, okay.
Okay, so is there a motion to approve Y and Z? All right, we got a motion and a second, so if you would, put that on the screen. We might finally get to into the purchases. All right, and those are approved.
And so with that, Mayor, I've got one update. I've got one update, Mayor, and that will be a finance update from the Finance Director. Director Angelica Alexander.
You know, if I was gonna make it here tonight, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council, Mr. City Manager, Mr. City Attorney. What is being passed out to you is the monthly finance snapshot. This is as of February twenty twenty-five, where we are comparing February of twenty twenty-five to February of twenty twenty-four. So from an operating fund standpoint, if you look to the top right of the snapshot, for the general fund, the general fund is up five point four eight percent. This is largely due to an increase in the franchise taxes, property taxes, and the insurance premium tax that we receive for fiscal year twenty-five. The other local option sales tax fund is up three point seven one percent. Hopefully, this is a trend that we'll see continue through the end of this fiscal year. If it does continue, or if we continue about the same, continue to collect about the same that we collected last fiscal year, we should end the year with just over three percent and the other, being up three percent in the other local option sales tax fund. The stormwater fund is up nine point two six percent. This is one of the funds that is solely primarily funded with property tax revenue, so there is an increase in property tax revenue for the stormwater fund, as well as the paving fund, that's up nine point three zero percent, again, due to property tax revenue increases. The community care fund, up just over eleven percent, again, it is one of those funds that's supported by property taxes. The integrated waste fund is showing a decline of twelve point thirteen percent. That decline there is not necessarily due to revenue collections from the garbage fees. It is due to a transfer that was made from the general fund to the integrated waste fund in fiscal year twenty-four. That was about two and a half million dollars to extend the services of Am Waste for the yard waste collections. And so if we remove the two point five million dollar transfer, that fund would actually be up about fourteen percent. And that is largely due to the increase in the residential garbage fee for FY twenty-five. The emergency telephone or E nine one one fund is down one point six eight percent. The economic development fund is also a fund that is supported by property tax revenue, that fund is up eight point seven five percent. The debt service fund is up six point eight zero percent. This is largely due to an increase in the debt service requirements that are being transferred into that fund from the other local option sales tax fund to support some of the bond payments that we're making from the other local option sales tax. The Metro Fund is up ten point six two percent. This is due to the timing of the federal grant reimbursements that we receive for for that fund, as well as property tax revenue. There's a small portion of our property tax mileage that goes to support the transportation fund. The trade center fund is up six point six two percent. This is largely due to an increase in space rental revenue, as well as an increase in the subsidy revenue that they receive in the form of hotel motel taxes. The Bull Creek Fund is down one point nine three percent. Oxford Creek is up four point nine eight percent. And the civic center fund is down thirteen point seven four percent, and again, this is due to the timing of events and shows at that facility. Moving down the snapshot to the other local option sales tax, public safety summary. To date, we've recorded about two, roughly twenty one point three million dollars in revenues. We've expended just over thirty-one, or obligated, I should say, just over thirty-one million in expenditures. For the other local option sales tax infrastructure fund, we've recorded nine point two million in revenue, and we've obligated just over fourteen million in expenditures. Moving to the to the left side of the snapshot for the general fund expenditures, you'll see there that the goal at this point in time is to be either above, at or above thirty-three percent. And so you'll see highlighted there in yellow, those departments that are not quite at that goal. First, with the city attorney's office, obviously, we're defending several million dollars in claims. For the city manager's office, there's a purchase order that's being processed, a large purchase order, I should say, that's being processed for the print shop. That department or division is housed under the city manager's office, and they will be moving out of its current location to the new city hall location. There was some equipment that was approved as part of the budget last fiscal year, and so the spin down of that purchase order is what's causing that percentage there to show less than the thirty-three percent. So for elections, they're just barely on the watch list here at thirty-three percent, but I think that's a rounding issue for them. So not too concerned about the expenses for elections. Or MCP, MCP is just below the thirty-three percent goal at thirty-two percent. The public defenders budget, there is a monthly contract that we pay to Atlanta for our public defenders. That contract is paid in advance, so we pay that on the first of every month, as required as part of the contract. And then lastly, the noncategorical listed there is for those transfers, those capital improvement projects that were approved as a part of the budget. Those transfers have been made, and as we continue on through the fiscal year, I don't anticipate that being an issue from a budgetary standpoint. So that, in a nutshell, is the snapshot for as of February of twenty twenty-five, and I'll be happy to answer any questions if you have.
Counselor Tucker?
Yes, what are the capital expenditures under the OLOS? What what does that include, the the six point nine?
So that would include those equipment, vehicles and equipment purchases by the public safety departments.
What what else is, so six point nine in in vehicles, is that all? Is there something else in in this?
Well, it's vehicles and equipment, so whatever is approved as part of the capital outlay budget for the public safety departments would be inclusive in that category.
Okay, and then the the transfers at eleven point eight million, what's what's that?
That is for capital improvement projects, so as well as transfers into the debt service fund for debt service requirements.
What kind of capital improvement projects?
So one would be the purchase of the property on Veterans Parkway for the fire station. That would have been, there are renovations that are part of that purchase, and those, the renovation budget was transferred from the public safety OLOS to a capital project fund.
Is the the Golden Park in transfer? Our payment for Golden Park, is that under the OLOS expenditures?
It would be under the infrastructure transfers. Part of the funding, debt service requirements for the bonds for Golden Park do, are, is funded from the OLOS infrastructure.
And what's the estimate of how much that is, that we're using out of that transfer?
For FY twenty-five, the debt service requirement for that particular bond was one point eight million dollars.
Okay, so this is for, you said one point eight million?
That's correct.
For FY two twenty-five? Okay. All right, thank you.
All right, Counselor Crabbe?
Thank you. Where are we on the indigent care? Have we? Have we voted on that, and have we created that, or are we still?
Deputy City Manager Haaj is sort of the lead on that project, so I'll allow her to speak to that.
So we will have the consultant, they will be here on April the eighth, making the presentation of the final program. There is still some additional work that's required for that program. We'll need a program administrator, we'll need a third-party administrator for administration of the claims. We'll need contracts initiated with all those providers that have met the requirements of the program that they've outlined, but they'll be at the next council meeting, giving the kind of the parameters of that program.
Okay, but aren't we pulling, aren't we pulling funds and holding funds until we get that settled, how we're gonna handle that? Aren't we pulling, like, a mill, we we changed the number, I can't remember, but we lowered, but we were still pulling funds off, and I don't see that on here.
Well, the the community care fund was formerly named the indigent.
Right, I'm sorry, I couldn't think of the new name.
So that is, and yes, we are, there are reserves, obviously.
And where are, where is that?
If you look to the top right, the community care.
I see it, okay. Thank you.
Counselor Chambers?
Yes, quick question, as far as expenditures on the personnel, I think we're at eleven million eight ninety-four four seventy-three, compared to this time last year was seventeen million. Is that due to vacancies, or what, why is that number?
Well, that number for FY twenty-four is not this time last year, that's for the entire fiscal year. So what you see in the column to the right there, that's for the entire fiscal year for FY twenty-four.
So do you know what the year-to-date number was in twenty twenty-four?
I can pull it, I don't know what that is right off the top of my head.
Yeah, I'll be curious to see that.
Okay.
And also speeding zone, speeding fines? Seven hundred and thirteen thousand?
That's low.
That's correct.
Ah, is that right?
Through February. July through February.
Wow, thank you.
That's just for the private schools.
And you only have, what, three of those zones?
I'm not sure, I believe it is two, I think it's two.
Well, then two, I I just say that to make the point that, of course, it's it's lucrative. So 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 be.
And by the way, it helps if you put your button, and I'll be glad to turn it on.
I'm gonna be trying to talk to Travis.
Start taking that gavel and banging.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
You and Crabbe over there, you're gonna spark up conversations on spur of the moment.
So when, in reference to that, because you, it, you know, it is, it's a lot of conversations on the state level in reference to this. How how does, where does these funds go? Is it a separate, is it a separate account that the sheriff has? That, I guess you would say, like a line item that would say whatever the the tickets for the school cameras?
So it is general fund revenue, but it can only be used for law enforcement purposes. So what we'll do at the end of each fiscal year, obviously, is reserve, set aside as a an encumbrance of sort. What is remaining to be utilized, and I will say that we've set up a separate call center that can be allocated, or that will be allocated in each of the public safety departments. Like I said, right now, it's just the sheriff, he is utilizing the monies that were added to his budget up through that point in time at the mid-year budget amendment. I think at that time, it was about four hundred thousand that was added to the sheriff's budget. I know he is utilizing those funds for law enforcement purposes. And what we'll do is, we'll look at what he has spent versus what we've collected, and we'll set aside as an as a reserve that money.
Okay, it'll be a reserve for?
It'll be a reserve specific for the sheriff, and then a reserve specific for all the other law enforcement agencies.
So we'll have two separate pots, because CPD will have theirs coming up pretty soon.
You'll actually have more than that, because CPD, I think, is sharing some with the other public safety departments to include the prison and the CFPMS.
And the school district.
So each?
And the school district.
And that's right, and the school district.
So each will basically have their own pot of money, it'll be distributed based on percentages or whatever, however.
Right now, because if there's a lot of legislation floating around up in Atlanta, and.
Did it go, did it move crossover?
Well, there's been a couple, there's been a couple of bills, I think the one that had the most traction is gonna limit the. uh is gonna limit the collection of the uh two uh vehicles that only pass through when the lights are flashing, to require to have flashing yellow lights. And uh they've talked about focusing the use of the money on uh school safety and/or public safety initiatives.
Oh, school safety.
So there's still, I don't think it's been, it's, I don't think it's passed the Senate yet.
When did, when did we start, when did we start this program? Was it last year?
I think it was late last fiscal year.
Late last fis- fiscal year?
Because that was a small amount that we collected in FY twenty-four. Um, so I I I feel as if it was in the last quarter of the fiscal year.
So this will be the first full?
First full fiscal year.
Fiscal year, okay.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything else?
I don't have anything else.
Um, Mayor, that concludes my agenda.
Okay. All right, uh, Madam Clerk? Hang on, I'm looking for you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On the Clerk's agenda, item one is the resignation of Counselor John Anchor from the.
All right, there's a motion to receive the resignation. Uh, second, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion second to approve the minutes. Uh, any that anybody would like pulled or edited? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Are there any opposed? All right, those approved.
Next, we have board appointments. Number three are the mayor's appointments. Any nominations may be confirmed at this meeting. We have the Building Authority of Columbus. Renee Sterkey is not interested in serving another term. Then we have the Columbus Sports and Entertainment Authority. Mr. Mayor, you have the CPA Corporate and Employment Attorney and the Law Enforcement Representative. And I want to add that um these terms will actually begin in July, so we'll have, we have plenty of time to get to those. Then we have the Community Development Advisory Council. Benjamin Link's seat is declared vacant. And the Housing Authority of Columbus. We have John Greaman, and he is eligible to serve another term.
And I wasn't able to get in touch with Mr. Sanders, but I believe Mr. Greaman doesn't want to serve, so I've got another name. I just need to confirm that.
Okay, thank you, sir.
I owe you a few names.
All right. Next, we have council's appointments. They are ready for confirmation. We have the Crime Prevention Board, Richard Kelly, Planning Advisory Commission's Rome Lakey, and Valley Partnership Joint Development Authority, Ben Moser.
All right, motion second to confirm those individuals appointed by council. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed?
Next, we have council's appointments. Any any nominations will be listed at the next meeting. We have the Columbus Sports and Entertainment Authority. We have the Commercial Businessperson, and Counselor Kogle is nominating Mike Welch. Then we have the business, or excuse me, Marketing Background Representative, and Counselor Davis has confirmed that he is nominating Annie Lucre. Then we've got the Promotional Entity. This entity needs to specialize in professional hockey. We have the Trade Center Representative, the River Center Representative, the CVB Representative. The Sports Council has nominated Herman Lewis Junior, and he can be confirmed.
Motion second to confirm Mr. Lewis. All in favor, please say aye. Are there any opposed? All right, he's confirmed.
And the Golf Authority has nominated Gerald Miley.
Motion second to confirm Mr. Riley. All in favor, say aye. All right, all opposed, any opposed? He's approved.
Next, we have Circle, and Counselor Crab is nominating Brandon Wilkins, and we will bring this back at the next meeting. Then we have the Crime Prevention Board, and Counselor Crab is nominating Ralph King, and we will bring this back for confirmation. We have the Employee Benefits Committee. We have Director Holly Browder. She is eligible to serve. Director Nancy Boren, who is eligible. We have Shannon Huber. The she is the General Government Employee Representative. She is also eligible to cons- to serve another term. We have Troy Vanerson, General Government Employee, and he is not eligible. We have Audrey Magruder. She is selected by the General Government Employees, and she is eligible to serve. And I will get with um the HR Director on that. Then we have Rachel Banks. She is eligible, and she is actually selected by the Public Safety Employees. And then we have Timothy Smith, a sworn officer, and he is not eligible. Next, we have the Land Bank Authority. We have a vacant seat. And then for Planning Advisory Commission, we have two seats that we need um someone to succeed them in. And that's all I have.
All right, thank you, Lindsay. All right, we've um, City Attorney has requested a, an executive session uh to um, please litigation and acquisition and disposal of land. Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Oh, uh, yes, you do. Uh, in fact, first, I think on the list was Mr. Broadwater. Sorry, I got a little bit on a roll there. Uh, we can get that turned on. We, no, I think they. Here we go, hang on.
Test one, two. Mr. Mayor, before I start, let me, I give me, give me ten seconds to comment on this podium. We need to get rid of this.
Yep.
This is, it's too cumbersome for speakers.
Got it.
Yes, sir, thank you. So let me turn my three minutes on, because I want to give one minute to what I was talking about before, uh, another minute to the charter, and I want to address the city manager. Start, okay.
You have to please address the city manager through me.
Well, I got you, I got you, Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry. So, I learned something tonight, and I talked about, you all are are very rude. I'm gonna tell you why. So I sat back there with some people that had never been here before, and they said, why are, now, you know, I come to these meetings, but they said, why aren't they looking at the speaker? People were on their phone the entire time for three speakers. That's rude. Somebody has to tell you that, and I don't have a problem doing it, uh, and I will tell you that. Um, secondly, perception is everything. If you're not looking at me when I'm talking to you, the perception is you don't care what I have to say. That, let's understand that. Today, I got a call from Cincinnati, Ohio. The young man asked me, Broadwater, what are y'all doing? I said, what are you talking about? He said, you all are the laughing stock of a lot of folks. I said, no, come on, man, what are you talking about? He said, your council is doing things just arbitrarily. He's, he watched the last meeting. He said that when you guys went to the public agenda, how, he said, he asked a specific question. How can you have someone as a private citizen chastise someone that's sitting up there? In the next moment, they're up there. He and I, and and he and I actually got in an argument. So we gotta think about what we are doing in dividing this city. And I'm gonna say this, uh, uh, Mr. Mayor, our city manager, he has a whole lot more kahunas than Broadwater. Because there's no way. I saw that, I watched that meeting twice, one section by one of the the new new counselor. And I said to myself, I've sat on two juries. One jury rewarded a man three million dollars. If someone took a excerpt and brought that in to me sitting on that jury, it's a hostile work environment. I don't care how you look at it, and I can say that because the Army trained me to recognize a hostile work environment. There is no way, if you look at that that meeting, and you look at that excerpt, I got twenty seconds, if you look at that excerpt, that anybody can reasonably think that is not hostile. And that person now today is on the council. You gotta think about that, you all, and I've talked to, I talked to every last one of you, and I'm gonna say this. If you don't have time to serve.
Mr. Broadwater.
Yes, sir, thank you so much.
Thank you, and by the way, I am glad to see you up and around with your knees.
Oh, I'm 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 back.
So I've noticed.
I'm back. Mr. Mayor, thank you very much.
Yes, sir, welcome back. All right. Pastor Flakes?
Mr. Mayor, thank you so very much for allowing me to come back.
Yes, sir.
I think I ended with um with Councilwoman um Julie Thomas and what she had recommended in her written resignation, and that was to really do the due diligence. And I was saying that for those who would come and give the impression that you were honoring former Councilwoman Julie Thomas by expediting, putting someone in that seat without giving opportunity for others to be nominated. It's disingenuous. It's reckless, and it does not take into account the voice of the people. Now, let me say this as I get ready to close, Brother Mayor. Is that I pray, along with all of those who came earlier, that I was told that what a person values, that's what the person gives the most attention to. There were two people that were not here. One is still not here. One came late, but sat patiently and heard every person who presented on animals. And yet, it appears to be, did not care about all these who have come to voice their concerns, whether verbally or just by their presence, did not have the respect to come and say, I want to listen to you. Optic is everything. And here's the last thing. I pray this council, when you come back, there's not a motion and a second to terminate this city city manager. Everything he was going through tonight, because there was the, there was that out there. We heard that tonight you were gonna do it. That's why you needed the seventh. I hope we don't come back, and then we're hearing that this was just a charade and just waiting for the opportunity again to take action. This city manager has a stellar record in leading this city. You should be applauding. You should be allowing him to go out and retire without having to come to a hostile, toxic environment. Thank you, Brother Mayor. God bless you. God keep you. It's our prayer.
Thank you, Pastor. All right. All right, we did have, we did uh not include a resolution to excuse Counselor Davis, so we could do an oral resolution. Uh, if anybody would like to make that motion. Motion and a second, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Okay. Motion to go into. Yeah, I can. Uh, it's for um litigation and for the acquisition and disposition of land. No personnel matters have been requested. Counselor Crab?
For the record, I wanted to let everyone know that Counselor Tucker was at Martin Army Hospital with her daughter. She tried to get back to this council meeting as fast as she could.
Thank you. All right, so we are, we had a motion and second to go into executive session. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? All right, we'll clear the chambers. We're in executive session. All right, we've been in executive session. Uh, we discussed uh the purchase, acquisition, disposal of land uh and um and uh litigation. And no votes were taken while we were in executive session. Mr. City Attorney, you want to hit your light, please, sir?
Uh, yes, sir, we have one resolution to call up. This is gonna be given a number by the clerk, but it will settle all claims of St. Michael Holloway individually on behalf of the heirs of Leslie Holloway deceased for three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, including attorney's fees, is ready for adoption.
Motion second to approve that amount. Uh, all in favor, say aye. Are there any opposed? All right, that's uh, that's approved. I entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion second to adjourn, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? We are adjourned.